December 13th, Emeryville City Planning Commission meeting. May we have the roll, please?
Yes, Commissioner Moss.
Present.
Commissioner Sherman.
Here.
Vice Chair Cardoza.
Here.
Chair Comerly.
Here.
And Commissioners Donaldson, Steinberg, and Tan have excused absences this evening, so we barely have a quorum of four planning commissioners.
Small crowd. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Is there anyone wishing to speak on items that are not on the agenda this evening? Seeing none, we can move on to the action recaps, please. Starting with October 25th.
Move approval.
I have just one comment. It's a really piddly comment, but the, is this October? Yeah, October 25th. On the, on the action recap, I was the one that said that Commissioner Cardoza's name was spelled wrong.
Oh.
Okay. All right, so would you like to make that motion with the amendment?
I will make the motion with the amendment.
I second that.
Do we need to call the roll?
Is that without exception?
Without exception.
So that was Commissioner Cardoza and seconded by Commissioner Sherman?
Sherman.
And there's no objection, so you can just do it that way?
And we have our special meeting, special joint meeting on October 30th, where we went over the zoning draft planning regulations. Are there any comments or changes?
Move approval.
I second.
I'll second.
Oh, okay, I seconded it. Is there any objections? No, seeing none. We can move on to November 19th. There are, there is an addendum here from Commissioner Sherman. Is that correct?
That is correct.
And I had a chance to read it. I also had a couple of amendments as well. On page three of three, the fourth paragraph down, I was asked, I wanted to know how far off this project was in complying with the minimum state standards, and I also asked if there were any comparisons in the area with which the school could be made.
Okay.
Which I believe there were none at that, there were none gathered at that meeting. And also, down a little further where I said I liked the multipurpose play structures, also would like to see as many windows. I wanted to, want as many windows as possible in the project. I also wanted to mention that the northeast corner on San Pablo needs extensive work to be perceived as friendly and welcoming, as a, as a community center that's friendly and welcoming, so I'd like to add that. Did anyone else have anything they wanted to add?
Well, I had said that I thought they were crowding too much on the property and that perhaps they shouldn't put all the schools on one site so there'd be more play space available.
Okay.
Is that not, that's not, that's not in here?
Not in there?
Okay.
So with those, I guess, four amendments, as it were, I would move approval.
I'll second.
Any objections? No.
So, excuse me, just trying to keep up with you here. So that was Commissioner, Chair Comerly seconded by Commissioner Moss, without objection?
By Commissioner Moss.
Okay.
And without exception.
Right.
Great. Now the directors report, please.
Okay. First, with regard to recent city council actions, since your last regular meeting in October, the city council has met three times, on November 6th, November 20th, and December 4th. And here's a brief summary of planning-related things that they did at those three meetings. On November 6th, they had a study session on street tree regulations and policies, and this was a follow-up to a previous study session that they had in July and the planning commission study session that you had in September. After hearing from a number of property owners, the council said they were not in favor of a heritage tree ordinance to regulate trees on private property. They directed staff to prepare guidelines on when to remove trees, street trees, as recommended by the commission, and also to prepare amendments to the urban forestry ordinance, including all of your recommendations, and the elimination of the exemption for city projects from the UFO. And also to refer the matter of the preservation of existing trees on private property in conjunction with development projects to the zoning update steering committee for inclusion in the new planning regulations, and I'll be mentioning that a little further, a little later this evening, when we talk about the new planning regulations. The council also set a hearing date of December 4th to consider the appeal on the Esquelela Bilingue pedestrian path design that you approved on September 27th. That was the appeal of the neighbors John and Kyrie Tan of your approval of that path. So December 4th was the date they set for that hearing. And for the so-called EBOT study, the Emeryville Berkeley Oakland Transit Study, the council approved our recommendation for the composition of advisory committees, a transportation, a technical advisory committee and a policy advisory committee for that study. So we'll now be putting together those committees and moving forward with that project. On November 20th, the council considered the significant structures ordinance. As you had previously recommended, they did not approve that ordinance after hearing from a number of property owners, but instead they directed staff to meet with property owners and other interested citizens to refine the map and list of significant structures and to bring it back to a future meeting. And that also, of course, has affected the planning regulations, the new planning regulations, and I'll get into that a little later as well. On December 4th, they held their annual election for mayor and vice mayor. Councilmember Brinkman was elected as mayor and councilmember Asher was elected as vice mayor for the next year until next December, and they were then sworn in by the city clerk. The council had a study session on impact fees, including three, three potential development impact fees, affordable housing, parks, and traffic impact fee. They directed that requests for proposals be prepared for the affordable housing fee study and also for an update of the park impact fee study, which was prepared about five years ago, and that we continue on, along with our work, with our ongoing work on the update of the traffic impact fee study, which, by the way, is currently scheduled for a study session here at the planning commission at your next meeting in January. They also directed that all three of these impact fees be referred to the new economic development advisory committee for that committee's information and comments. On the appeal of the Esquelela Bilingue pedestrian path design, which was heard on December 4th, the council heard the appeal of the neighbors John and Kyrie Tan of your September 27th approval of that path design, and after lengthy testimony, the council upheld your approval of the path design with a modified enhanced condition about lighting to prevent glare on adjoining properties. Other than that, they made no changes to the conditions that you had previously put on that design. However, given the ongoing controversy about this path, the council members also opined that it would be better for all concerned if there were no path at all. And therefore, they directed that a general plan amendment be initiated to delete this path from the general plan. A resolution to formally initiate this general plan amendment is on the council's next meeting, December 18th. And assuming that resolution passes, the process will then be initiated and the proposed amendment will be referred to the BPAC, the Pedestrian Bicycle Advisory Committee, for their recommendation, probably at their February 4th meeting. It will then be brought to the planning commission for a public hearing for your consideration in February. Also, the Esquelela Bilingue site plan will have to be redesigned in order to eliminate that path from their plan. They have 20 more feet now, or they will if the path goes away. And that will also need to come back to the commission and council for approval as an amendment to their use permit. And as a part of all of this, some kind of alternative pedestrian enhancements probably along San Pablo Avenue may be included in the project to sort of offset the loss of the path. On a related note, and this was not a council action, but it fits in here, so I just wanted to mention it. At the request of the school district, a similar general plan amendment is also being initiated to eliminate the path between 47th and 53rd Streets from the general plan. And assuming that that resolution also passes next Tuesday to initiate the process, then that general plan amendment will go in tandem with the other one, and they'll both go to the BPAC and to the planning commission and back to the city council on the same, at the same time.
What was the second general plan amendment again, on 43rd Street?
It's the path on the western edge of the Center of Community Life Site, the pedestrian and bicycle path that goes between Emery Bay Village and the school site between 47th and 53rd Streets.
It doesn't exist.
It doesn't exist now, but it's in the general plan. That was, when you had the study session on ECCL, I believe you and Commissioner Sherman both noted that the path was not there, and they are now asking that it be deleted from the general plan. You will have an opportunity to weigh in on that when it comes back to you. The 39th and Adeline Residential Project came to the council for a one-year extension. That's 101-unit residential project. After some discussion, it became apparent that were, that there were not three votes on the council to approve this extension unless more family-friendly units were added. So at that point, the council continued the item to their next meeting, next Tuesday. And meanwhile, the developer has been meeting with council members and an attempt to redesign the project to win their approval so that they will extend the entitlements. So we'll see what happens next Tuesday. Stay tuned for that. Concerning the trees in the Parkside Park, after hearing from the Public Works Director about various options and costs for relocating the existing trees, the council decided to keep the existing trees right where they are. This is the ones on the western half of the site along Stanford Avenue with the berm there. So they decided to keep those trees where they are, to keep the berm where it is, and to redesign the park around those features. And so they, so, so I and the Public Works Director are going to be meeting with Art Stone about how to, how to carry out that redesign. The council passed the first reading of an ordinance amending the municipal code provisions about massage parlors to streamline the local massage therapy permitting procedures while still facilitating and advancing the ethical practice of massage therapy. Under state law, permitting of individual massage practitioners is deferred to the state while the city retains the authority to regulate and permit massage establishments. This ordinance also provides certain exemptions, including chair massage. These provisions of the municipal code are outside of the planning regulations, and they're enforced by the police department, but I mention them because they are planning-related and because this issue was brought up and discussed at your joint meeting with the city council on October 30th, so I thought you'd like to know what, what happened with it. The council made appointments to the new Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee, including Gail Donaldson as the commission's representative, and Kurt Brinkman is a non-voting city council liaison member. Finally, the council created the new Economic Development and Advisory Committee, and they are expected to make appointments to that committee in February following an announcement and a period of time when applications will be accepted. The only other thing I have to report tonight is about the zoning update, and what I have to report is that I have nothing to report. This is the first time in many, many months that I don't have a report to you on the zoning update because it's on your agenda. And this basically is the end of the road for that, except, of course, for the city council adoption hearings, which I will report to you in the future under city council actions. So that concludes my report. I'd be happy to respond to any questions you may have.
Any questions? No, thank you, Charlie. Move on to our first item, complete streets policy. Arlie.
Good evening, commissioners. So I want to start this presentation by giving credit where credit is due. Our intern, Diane Dome, played a very large part in putting both your staff report and the attached documents, as well as the PowerPoint, together. So we're going to talk about complete streets in a very brief manner. As you are probably aware, complete streets have two components. Expanded out from just being a street where all modes fit safely, it's also considered a street where all people with all mobility types feel safe and can use the roadway. Emeryville has incorporated complete streets into its overall philosophy. The general plan from 2009 has a specific policy that talks about complete streets, and the following documents, the Ped and Bike Plan and Sustainable Transportation Plan, also have related policies further promoting this language. The reason this is important is because two regional bodies are requiring a complete streets policy in order to, in the case of the Metropolitan Transportation Commission, be viable for O-BAG or One Bay Area grant funding, and in the case of the Alameda County Transportation Commission, in order to receive Measure B funds and the vehicle registration fee funds. So it's obviously important that we dot our i's and cross our t's in this. We do have the language in our general plan already, but thought it would be extra safe to adopt this policy. The policy itself has 10 points, or 10 parts to it. The vision at the top and the exceptions at the bottom were left to the city to develop, so we spoke to a few departments and made sure that we had a good process for the exceptions. The vision, again, was crafted by our lovely intern. And that, all of those parts are where in your staff report, so I'm not going to read through them. So, in conclusion, the resolution demonstrates our continued dedication to providing safe, comfortable, and convenient transportation to all users and modes in Emeryville. With that, staff recommends that the planning commission approve and recommend to council the adoption of the attached complete streets policy resolution. Are there any questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Arlie. Are there any comments? I move approval.
Second. I didn't hear the second, I'm sorry.
Commissioner Moss was second.
All right. So, you ready to vote? Okay, then. Commissioner Moss.
Aye.
Commissioner Sherman.
Aye.
Vice Chair Cardoza.
Aye.
Chair Comerly.
Aye.
Four ayes, the resolution is approved. We will forward your recommendation to the city council.
Thank you, and thank you, Diane. Okay, moving on. Our next item is not going to happen. So we were going to be talking about city storage. However, Mr. Commissioner Moss is going to need to recuse himself, and then we will not have a quorum, so we're going to move that along, yeah?
That will be continued to your January 24th meeting.
Should we save this packet or give it back to you, or what?
Well...
Why print it again?
Except we'll have to change the date.
That's true.
But, I think, you can recycle it. It's okay. Well, actually, why don't you give it back to us? We can use the plans.
Just leave them on the diaphragm collection.
Only the cover you're going to change.
Yeah, just leave them there. We'll, we'll pick them up later.
Great. Thank you.
Yeah.
So our next item is the Pixar Warehouse.
This is an item that you reviewed as a study session at the October meeting. It's a use permit and design review to establish about 28,000 square feet warehouse by Pixar to store research material, office furniture, and general hardware at 5,000 Hollis Street, which is also known as Level 3 building. This is the existing site plan of Level 3 building, and not too many changes are taking place on the site itself, other than the spots here, which will create, create a loading zone for the Pixar Warehouse. So this is the proposed site plan, and there are a couple of new things that have occurred since we last discussed this project in October. What has not changed is that Pixar is going to be occupying about 28,000, which is about a quarter of the building. They will have two new doors, and there will be new landscaping, which I'll talk about a little bit later on. They had also proposed a new exit door here and a new pedestrian access door here. Since then, the city attorney's office has informed us that because Spur Alley is under private ownership, and although the city does have easement for pedestrian and bicycle access, we do not have the right to grant any adjacent property owners, such as Level 3 folks, right to have access onto Spur Alley. For this reason, we have introduced a condition of approval, which requires these two doors to be eliminated from the project. Regarding the exit door, the fire exit issues will be addressed by creating an internal corridor, so that's, that won't be a problem. Regarding the pedestrian access door, what it will mean is that the Pixar employees will have to walk about 100 feet to Hollis to access the warehouse. So this is the landscape plan that they have proposed. Essentially, they're going to add some more trees, one coastline oak, which is right here, and then three strawberry trees, and then between that you have three different kinds of shrubs, which are bay-friendly in nature. So these are the existing elevations that you're familiar with and you saw at the study session, and at the east elevation, this door will be eliminated.
Excuse me, that will disappear?
This is Spur Alley right here. So this door, which they had proposed, they cannot have this, and, because of the easement issue, so this elevation would not have this door.
So basically, it will look just like the top elevation?
Exactly. In terms of operational characteristics, nothing has changed. It is primarily going to be used to store research material, office furniture, and general hardware. No employees are expected to be at this facility on a full-time basis, that is, will not serve as a permanent office space at any time. On an average, four to six vehicular trips per day are expected, with about a couple of semi-truck deliveries occurring per month. Truck and pedestrian activities are expected to occur during normal business hours. In terms of conformity to general plan and the zoning regulation, the site falls in the OT, or the Office Technology Zone, where retail sales and warehousing users are conditionally permitted, only if they are secondary to the other permitted or conditionally permitted users. And this finding that you need to make in order to approve this project can be made because Pixar falls into the use classification of administrative and business offices that are allowed by right in the OT zone. In terms of height and FAR, there are no changes to either the height or the floor area of the building, and the existing building conforms to these standards in any case. Regarding parking, that is also not an issue. The existing Level 3 building triggers about 12 parking spaces, and the proposed use triggers an additional 28 parking spaces, and there are existing 77 parking spaces, so there's more than enough parking. And furthermore, about a quarter of the building will remain vacant, so in future, if that use, if that space is to be occupied by a new use, there will still be parking for that use. There was a community meeting that was held in August at the Emery Bay Village HOA room, and no problems or concerns were identified at that time. Like I mentioned, you did review this project at a study session, and your comments was replacement of the chain link fence along Spur Alley and landscape improvements in the parking lot. We are not recommending the replacement of the chain link fence at this point because the city is requiring that no access doors be along the Spur Alley, and we do not believe there is an adequate nexus for us to require this, and therefore, it's not included as a condition of approval. Regarding landscape improvements, they have complied with that, and as I showed you in my previous slide. So that concludes my presentation. We are recommending approval, subject to the conditions of approval in the staff report. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Could the tenant have requested permission from the owner of Spur Alley to access onto it?
Yes, I'm sorry, say that again.
Did the tenant, Pixar, request permission from the owner of Spur Alley to?
No, they were not interested in pursuing that, that venue. And therefore, they are aware of these conditions of approval, and they're okay with that.
Can the, can the city attorney elaborate any on the, kind of the technicalities of this easement issue? Well, the, the easement, as Mira said, the easement allows the city to have, to allow for public access, ped bike access through the alley, but the rights that we have under the easement do not allow us to then grant further rights to, to any other property owners, such as the Pixar applicant in this case, to access the, to access the alley off of their property. Essentially, our easement with the property owner allows us to have through access only and doesn't allow additional access from the neighboring properties. So it doesn't function the same way as a, as a public right-of-way, like a public street? It functions differently than that? That's right.
Are there any other questions? Any comments?
Believe the applicant is here, if you want to hear from them.
Oh, absolutely. Please.
Good evening. My name is Sasha Wagner with Huntsman Architectural Group. I'm here on behalf of Pixar Animation Studios, the applicant. The issue of the, the public easement access through the pedestrian gate that was originally proposed is familiar to Pixar, and Pixar accepts the restrictions. However, the, the restriction on the exit door is, is news to the applicant. This is the first time we're hearing about that. And it represents a significant hurdle to the project in that I think that the interior exiting requirements, exit separation, and access to two exits is going to be extremely difficult to achieve, so we'll have to go back to the drawing board and see if we can meet the building code requirements. And certainly, we're, we're open to exploring the possibility of coming to terms with the, the owners of Spur Alley in terms of, and access being granted by those parties. So we may need to defer this project and, and come back and refine the application. We're just not sure whether the project can work without that second exit door.
Just as a matter of clarification, I've spoken with both the building and fire officials
regarding whether, how to address this issue, and they are confident that it can be worked out using an internal corridor. And this was also mentioned in the staff report, which was sent to Craig. And when I spoke to Craig, we spoke only about the pedestrian access gate, and he was okay with that, and he did not mention anything regarding the exit door and having issues with that. So at least in terms of code, it can be worked out.
Okay.
Craig being Craig Payne from Pixar.
Well, we'll certainly review it. I mean, it obviously represents an additional penalty financially to the project, and that internal care corridor will probably be 1,000 square feet of, you know, space that Pixar will have to lease without using, so we'll certainly, you know, take a look at it. Are the, is the appropriate step to, to contact the, the owners of the Spur Alley? Is there anything in the city code that would prevent such a private agreement for this door to exist?
I don't believe so.
No.
Okay.
The, the key is that, my understanding anyway, is that a fire exit door has to exit onto a public right-of-way ultimately. So if you can get out to Spur Alley and then get to 53rd Street or 47th Street, that should comply with the, the code, but it has to be always available for that.
A fire engine doesn't need to be able to come into that exit door?
Uh, no, this is not for that. Although I think a fire engine, if they needed to fight a fire here, could go down Spur Fire Department doesn't need an easement for that kind of thing, I don't think.
I don't have any additional comments.
Any questions to the?
Do they want to hold off this matter until you get that resolved, or?
I'd like to confer with, with Pixar. I can do that in short order here, if it's okay. Take a two-minute break and give them a call.
I think, I mean, if we're comfortable with conditioning it either way, I think we could proceed.
Yeah.
If, if the private agreement was, was arrived at, would, would Pixar need to come back for additional planning approval for that door?
Not if the commission approves it with that contingency.
So can we do it that way? Then, then absolutely would be, we wouldn't want to delay this any further.
So if you did get approval from the owner of Spur Alley, you would remove the chain link fence?
No, we wouldn't. The chain link fence issue has gone away. It would just simply be about creating the exit from the building.
And you wouldn't have the gate and the chain link fence?
No, I don't think so.
Okay.
Just so that we are clear, if, if Pixar is going to explore the possibility of getting access rights through private negotiations, they could also do that for pedestrian gate. And then if it, there is a pedestrian gate... And then if it, there is a pedestrian gate, then the question of chain link fence comes up again.
So there, and, and there it is. Are there any other questions?
It sounds like they don't want to put in the pedestrian gate. Is that, was a pedestrian gate originally a city request?
No, it was their request.
No, Pixar was interested in the, in adding the pedestrian gate, but at the time, the request was made by, by the planning department to replace the entire fence with a decorative wrought iron fence, and Pixar did not want to incur the expense of upgrading that fence for a property which they don't own.
That request actually came from the planning commission, I believe, at the study session.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you.
So I, I think you're, John, you were the one that brought up the, the fence.
I did, I'm looking for an opportunity to get rid of the razor wire in a public area. Looking for any opportunity to do that. But it's, given the changes that are going on, and if there's not going to be a door through there, I can understand why we wouldn't ask them to do that.
Chair, Chair Coomerly, before you deliberate, may I suggest that you hold the public hearing?
Oh, absolutely. Sorry about that. Excuse me. I would like to open the public hearing. Are there any members of the public that would wish to come forward? Seeing none, close the public hearing. Apologies.
Thank you.
And now.
Okay, I would make a motion that we approve the amended plan with the added condition that they, if they can put in, if they can get approval for the fire exit onto Spur Alley, that that be allowed.
That that be included in this?
Yeah.
Does that make sense?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, I, I would second that.
Or, or either, I mean, do, do we want to allow either of those, either or both of those accesses, right, that were shown?
Either or both, yeah, so. So either it will be approved as shown here with the internal door, with the building department being in charge of making sure that is safe, or the door that, that leads onto Spur Alley, some agreement is, is arranged privately.
Right, so basically, the, the two options are either as described in the staff report or as shown in the plans.
Or as, exactly.
Right?
For only the exit door.
For only the exit door, not the pedestrian gate, unfortunately.
Well, I, I guess what I, what I was saying is, do we want to, I mean, should we allow them the flexibility to have the pedestrian gate if they were, I mean, if, if they so chose?
No, they said they did not want it.
Yeah.
I would, I would suggest that if you are going to allow that, then it's probably reasonable to require them to replace the fence.
Yes.
And I believe, I heard that they aren't interested in replacing the fence.
They don't own the property.
They're not interested.
Well, they don't own the fence, right. I, I just wouldn't want to preclude them from having pedestrian access if they wanted it.
So you'd allow them to have a pedestrian gate but not replace the fence?
Well, no, I would, I would have, if they're going to get the gate, they, they replace the fence.
I, I believe the applicant made it clear that they weren't interested in putting a pedestrian, replacing the fence, therefore not having pedestrian gate. I'm guessing that's true, and would that ever come up?
That's correct, and, and I think Pixar would be interested in, in removing the razor wire if that can be an accommodation with the, with the current owner of the building, and adding the pedestrian gate. And I think the pedestrian gate that was proposed had, you know, was a wrought iron gate, et cetera. It's just, you know, there's several hundred feet of, of fence that, that's on an existing property that Pixar is just leasing space in, so they wanted to, you know, minimize the financial impact on, of improvements in, in, in that area. So yes, they're interested in having the gate, but if having the gate means having to replace the entire fence, then they would just withdraw the, the request for having the gate. Does that make sense?
Okay, thank you. So do we, would we like to have the razor wire removed then as an alternate? Here we are.
It'd be a small improvement.
Would be a small improvement.
Remove the razor wire and put in the pedestrian gate if they so choose.
So that would be three potentials? Is that possible to do in this?
Sure.
Okay, I think that would be good then.
So that I am clear?
If, if an agreement can be made with the, with the Spur Alley owner that the razor wire is removed, or I'm not sure who owns that fence.
I don't think they have the razor wire or a building permit.
So essentially, if an agreement is reached, they can have both the exit door and the pedestrian door with the provision that the razor wire be removed.
Correct.
Or they build as described in the staff report.
Yes.
I believe I heard that the gate also is wrought iron.
Yeah.
I don't remember if that's what the plans show. Okay, so, so the gate would be wrought iron, the rest of the fence would remain, but the razor wire would be removed.
Yes.
Right.
Okay. So those three potentials?
So they got a lot of choices here.
So they have a lot of choices.
Okay.
I, I'm not sure, Buzz had a, would you like to re?
Maybe I can get Charlie to state my motion.
All right, I believe Mr. Commissioner Cardoza's motion was to approve this application as per the staff report and conditions of approval with the added provisions that the exit door on Spur Alley may be allowed if they can work out an acceptable agreement with the owner of Spur Alley, which I would note, I think we need to approve as well. We need to make sure the language of that is acceptable to the city attorney.
Okay.
And then also that they would be allowed to have the gate in the fence with the provision that the gate be wrought iron and the razor wire be removed. Or at their option, they don't have to put in the gate, in which case, they don't have to remove the razor wire.
Correct.
Correct.
That right?
Well, good, I think you got it.
Yeah, I would second that. Call the roll.
Okay, Commissioner Moss?
Aye.
Commissioner Sherman?
Aye.
Vice Chair Cardoza?
Aye.
Chair Coomerly?
Aye.
Four ayes, the application is approved. This decision may be appealed to the city council within 15 days.
Thank you. Next, we have our new planning regulations. The moment we've all been waiting for. Charlie, please, take us through it.
All right, well, Chair Coomerly and members of the planning commission, I'm very pleased to be before you tonight to present the new planning regulations to implement the general plan. This is your public hearing on, on those regulations, and hopefully, a recommendation to the city council that they be adopted. First, just by way of brief background, back in 2003, the city council passed a resolution affirming its intent to update the general plan and then to subsequently update the zoning ordinance. And of course, the general plan, the new general plan was adopted in October of 2009. I'm going the wrong way here. Since that time, the zoning updates steering committee has been working diligently to develop and review these new planning regulations. The steering committee completed its review in August, and we then published a public review draft of the new regulations that reflected all of the steering committee's comments. That was published on September 28th. A public workshop on the public review draft was held on Saturday, September 29th, and then a joint study session, as I'm sure you all recall, was held with the city council on October 30th. We summarized the proposed changes from the community meeting and the joint study session in a decision guide that the steering committee reviewed at its final meeting on November 15th. This decision guide included revisions that resulted from the community workshop, from the joint study session, from other public comments that we received, and also from staff's own internal review of the public review draft. The steering committee reviewed the decision guide and then voted chapter by chapter on the revisions to the public hearing draft, and the steering committee then voted unanimously to recommend planning commission approval and city council adoption. We then prepared a public hearing draft of the new regulations, which is what you have in your packets, and that is redlined to show changes from the public review draft. The public hearing draft is what is before you tonight for your consideration. Just as a reminder, the planning regulations are part of the Emeryville Municipal Code, which is the body of law that the city council adopts. It's divided into 10 titles covering a variety of topics. Title IX is where the planning regulations are found, and currently, that title is called Planning and Zoning. The existing Title IX will be repealed in its entirety and replaced with a new Title IX, which will be called Planning Regulations, and that reflects the other title that the Planning and Building Department administers, which is the Building Regulations. As you recall, title, the proposed Title IX is divided into eight chapters, which are listed here. I'm not going to go through them and summarize them tonight. You had five hours of that on October 30th, so I don't think you need to hear it again. If you need a refresher on anything, we did include in your packets as attachment one, the staff report from the October 30th meeting, which is a summary of these regulations. And of course, you have the whole 360-page tome also that you can read if you wish. Obviously, if you have any questions about any provision, just feel free to ask, and we'll, we'll, you know, clarify what it is. This is what the decision guide looked like, that the steering committee saw. It's six pages, it's attachment two in your packet. The one that the steering committee saw, of course, was not redlined because they hadn't made their decisions yet, but what we've done here is to take the, the same decision guide that the steering committee got and marketed it up to show what the decisions were that the steering committee made, and those are all in red. So just looking across this chart, over in the left-hand column, each item is just numbered for reference, and then the page of each item in the, in the plan, in the regulations, and then the section number and the topic. Of course, there, it's ordered by the chapters in the zoning regulation, in the planning regulations. And then is, there's a brief description of what the proposed change was, and over here on the far right are some dots and some columns that indicate where these suggested changes came from. This column is from either the community workshop or other public comments. The middle column is from the joint study session, and the far-right column means that that originated with staff, from staff's review. This column here indicates what the staff's recommendation to the steering committee was, and then the column next to that, which we've added to the chart in red, indicates what the steering committee's decision was. And also, if the steering committee made any changes to any, the language of any of these suggestions or any other substantive changes to them, that's noted in red here in this column. Again, this chart is six pages long, this is just the first page, I'm just showing it to you by way of example, but certainly can answer questions on any of the rest of it if you wish. So the redlined public hearing draft is based on this chart and other non-substantive grammatical and formatting and typographical corrections that staff identified. This is an example of what the redlined public hearing draft looks like. You know, I'm sure you're all familiar with redlining. This just shows in the left-hand column, there's a, a vertical red bar that indicates there's a change here, and deletions are shown in strikeout type and additions are shown in underlining type. This particular example shows the section where temporary uses were changed from 90 days to 60 days, but throughout the entire document, you'll see this kind of redlining that shows the various changes that have, that have been made. So with that, I'm now going to walk through chapter by chapter what the major changes were that the steering committee approved and that are reflected in the public hearing draft. There were no substantive changes to Chapter One, General Provisions, or Chapter Six, Subdivision Regulation, so I'm not going to talk about those two chapters, just Chapters Two through Five and Seven and Eight. So first, to begin with Chapter Two in the Use Classification chapter, temporary uses, those were changed from 90 days to 60 days, which was the redline example I just showed you. Checkcashing has been separated out as a separate use classification from banks. Staff was directed to try to come up with a good name for this, which was a difficult task for the, for the joint, at the joint study session to come with, to come up with on the spot. But what we have come up with is what we're calling non-traditional financial institutions. So what we've done is to divide financial institutions into two subcategories, traditional and non-traditional. Traditional being those institutions where the customer typically has a long-term relationship with the institution, opening accounts and making deposits and so forth, and those are, include banks, savings and loans, credit unions, and the like. Non-traditional financial institutions are those where the customer typically does not have a long-term relationship or open accounts or make deposits, but rather, it's short-term loans and buyback functions such as checkcashing, payday lenders, cash for gold, and pawn shops. So that's how we've defined those. And I'll get into how these are regulated when we talk, when we get to Chapter Three. Clinics and medical offices, we've added chiropractors, acupuncturists, naturopaths, and holistic medicine as examples of that. Motels, like checkcashing, have been separated out as a separate use classification from hotels based on exterior access to the rooms as opposed to interior access for hotels. For government offices, we've added social services as an example of a kind of government office. And what we used to call uses that are always principal uses, which is kind of an unwieldy handle, we're now calling those uses of special concern to make it clear that, that the reason they're always principal uses is that we have some, some concern about them because of their potential to have adverse impacts on their, on other surrounding uses. And so then throughout the code, we now refer to uses of special concern instead of uses that are always principal uses. We have also added non-traditional financial institutions, motels, and recycling facilities to this list of uses of special concern. Finally, collection bins for clothes and recycled materials have been added to the list of uses that are always accessory, and when we get to Chapter Seven, you'll see how we've dealt with that in terms of design review. Moving on to Chapter Three, the zoning districts. First, Commissioner Moss pointed out a couple of errors on the maps, and we have fixed those, both on the overlay map and the base zone map, but I'm only showing you the overlay map because we did the same correction to the base zone map. Down in this area, we've added the Shellmount 40th Street Bridge and the street grid, and on the overlay map only, we have deleted the pedestrian priority overlay zone from Bay Street because Bay Street is a PUD, and PUDs are not supposed to have overlay zones, so that was a good catch by Commissioner Moss. The use met, matrix, this is not a change, this is simply an informational item, but we were requested at the joint study session to bring back the color-coded matrix, that those of you on the steering committee have already seen this, but it shows the symbols that were changed during the review process. Approximately 60 of the 1,600 symbols on this chart have been changed, which is about 4%. And this is just an excerpt, just an example that shows what, how that, how the, the chart is highlighted to indicate some of the changes that were made. These, this kind of orange color represents changes in the INL Light Industrial Zone that were requested by property owner Larry Farb and approved by staff, and then the blue are similar changes requested by Mr. Farb that were approved by the steering committee. Staff did not feel comfortable saying that was okay, but the steering committee approved those. Then over here in this column, the yellow in the OT Office Technology Doyle Hollis North Zone, these are changes that staff made in order to ensure that the provisions for that zoning district conform to the settlement agreement that we reached with the property owners in that area as a result of that lawsuit. And then the lighter green shading here represents other miscellaneous changes that the steering committee made during the process. So back to checkcashing and other non-traditional financial institutions, the matrix has been modified to indicate that they are conditionally permitted in the regional retail overlay zone only, and they are prohibited everywhere else. Same thing for motels, the chart has been modified to show them as conditionally permitted in regional retail and prohibited everywhere else. For planned unit developments, we've added a provision simply to clarify that final development plans of existing PUDs are processed under these new regulations. Generally speaking, PUDs are, fall under the regulations that were in place when they were approved and under the ordinance that approved them. However, for future final development plans of existing PUDs, we want those to follow the, these new regulations, which means that the planning commission would give final approval to final development plans as opposed to the city council. Moving on to Chapter Four, there were a number of revisions in Chapter Four, Site Development Regulations. First, with regard to projections above height limits, the coverage here was increased First, with regard to projections above height limits, the coverage here was increased from 10 to 20% for projections more than five feet tall if they're entirely enclosed in a mechanical penthouse. That must be roofed except for equipment that cannot function if it has a roof on it, such as cooling towers. There were a number of changes in the public benefits. A provision for operation and maintenance, permanent ongoing operation and maintenance has been added as a requirement for public open space, transportation demand management, bike stations, and electric vehicle charging stations. A new tier for alternative energy has been added, which would be worth 50 points, excuse me, for 100% onsite renewable sources, i.e. zero net energy. This was at the suggestion of StopWaste.org. Under family-friendly housing, that's been extensively revised to increase the maximum points from 35 to 50, to change the formula so that it is now based on a percentage of the units that are family-friendly, two points for each percentage. So if you had 25% of your units family-friendly, you would get the full 50 points. The minimum size has been reduced from three-bedroom to two-bedroom. The Steering Committee, I think, felt that, and staff feels that, there are some families that don't need three-bedroom units. There are small families, coupled with one child, may not need a three-bedroom unit. However, the average of all of the family-friendly units has to be 2.5 bedrooms, meaning that you have to have at least as many three-bedroom units as you have two-bedroom units. Common space may be traded for private open space. There previously was a suggestion that for family-friendly units, they had to have private open space, could not trade it for common open space like you can for other residential units. But the Steering Committee felt that common open space is as important for family-friendly units as private open space is, and they felt that that trade should still be allowed for family-friendly. Finally, the citywide design guidelines are going to be refined. That's not included in the planning regulations, but they are referenced in the planning regulations in this section. So when they, when the provisions for family-friendly housing get updated in the citywide design guidelines, then this section will automatically reference that update. For public arts, the maximum bonus points has been reduced from 35 to 20. Similarly, for mechanical penthouses, the maximum points was reduced from 35 to 20, and it was clarified that the equipment has to be concealed entirely within the penthouse or somewhere else in the building, such as in the basement. If you do put all your mechanical equipment in the basement, then you're eligible for the 20 points. If it is a penthouse, it must be entirely roofed, again, except for equipment that won't function, such as cooling towers, if it's roofed. We have a new public benefit called Universal Design, and that is worth up to 50 points, again, with two points per percent of residential units that have Universal Design features. So if you have 25% of your units, you get the full 50 points. And there is a list of all these features that have to be included in order to be eligible for this bonus. As regards minimum parking, yes, ma'am?
Is that that list that we received at the Joint?
Yes.
And expanded?
Yeah, no, it's the same list. And you'll, it's in the chart, in the bonus section in Chapter Four. It's probably the biggest section of that chart because it's a rather lengthy list. For minimum parking requirements, this is another informational item. We were requested at the Joint Study Session to research parking requirements of other cities for comparison, to see where we fall. What we found is that we tend to generally be somewhere in the middle. But I would also point out that, and this is the new proposed regulations, I would point out that most other cities do not have the kind of flexibility that we're proposing with the conditional use permit available to increase or decrease the parking as, depending on the circumstances. So we prepared some bar charts for you here. In this, in this PowerPoint, Emeryville is highlighted in gold. In your packet, it's not highlighted, they're just all blue. But this is Attachment Three, I believe, in your staff report. So we looked at Oakland, Berkeley, and San Francisco. We were also asked to look at the new parking requirements in Sacramento, where they've divided the city into a number of different parking districts. So we looked at the traditional district and the urban district, which is in the core downtown Sacramento area. We also looked at some smaller local cities that are more similar to Emeryville, including El Cerrito, Albany, Alameda, and Piedmont. And what we did was to take just a typical project and calculate what the parking requirement would be in each of these cities for that project. So this is a 40-unit, two-bedroom apartment building. As you can see, we're in the middle, a little bit towards the high end, but pretty much in the middle. Next is an office building, 10,000-square-foot office building, where we're more towards the lower end. A retail building, 50,000 square feet, or other large retail building, where we fall right in the middle of that. Restaurant, 3,000-square-foot restaurant, we fall towards the lower end for that one. And for an industrial building of 50,000 square feet, we're about in the middle. So staff feels that our proposed parking regulations are reasonable, given this, these comparisons. And also, again, that we do have the flexibility that most other cities don't have to modify these on a case-by-case basis.
Can you talk to that just for a second while you're on that?
Uh huh.
Subject is, if you could go back to one of those slides. So if we, if we did adjust the minimums, we've got that flexibility.
Uh huh.
And we lowered it to the lowest, how does it measure up?
These are the lowest. These are shown as the lowest. This is the 33% below the demand that we've shown here.
Okay.
So for...
So that's still higher than other cities, then?
It's higher than some other cities, yeah.
Because the, I want to make sure I'm clear. So the 33% below is, that's what's allowed by right?
Right.
And any lower requires a use permit?
Correct. This shows the lowest that is allowed by right.
Right, okay. And I guess my question was, how much further can we drop it?
To zero.
Okay.
I mean, you have to make findings, and the applicant has to convince you that it's not going to create a parking problem and that they have provided adequate alternative transportation measures. But if they do that, the regulations explicitly say to reduce or eliminate the parking requirement. You can do it. So there is no absolute minimum. I mean, it's, the absolute minimum is zero.
And this is very forward-thinking.
So in terms of renting out parking, provision was added in the unbundled section for residential multi-unit buildings that allows unused spaces to be rented out to non-residents. But they have to be vacated on 30 days' notice if they become needed by residents, and this does not apply to visitor spaces. So you can't lease out your visitor spaces. This was the only issue that the Steering Committee didn't reach consensus on. They were split on this, and there was a vote taken, and it was five ayes and three noes. So it was approved by a majority of the Steering Committee, but there was some dissension about it. Existing trees on private property, this is what I mentioned in my Director's Report. This resulted from a City Council Study Session on Street Trees on November 6th. A new provision was added that the city may require developers of private property to preserve existing healthy trees if that is feasible. And an arborist report may be required, and of course, that would be at the applicant's expense. The applicant can either have the arborist report prepared by the city's arborist, or if they choose to use a different arborist, then it would have to be peer-reviewed by the city's arborist. And in either case, the applicant would have to pay for all the arborist reports. With regard to the screening of rooftop equipment, this was modified to indicate that it has to be visually screened, not just from the ground level, which is what we said before, but from adjoining property at or below the same level as the equipment. So in other words, horizontally. This does not require screening if you're above the level of the equipment and looking down on it. But if you're looking across at it or up at it, it has to be screened. And in addition to visually screened, it also has to be acoustically screened. I think that was implicit, but it wasn't obvious. So we made it clear, it has to be acoustically screened to conform to the noise, performance standards for noise. So that's Chapter Four. Moving on to Chapter Five, the Citywide Use and Development Regulations. Under home occupations, the Steering Committee rejected a proposal to allow commercial hauling if there were no open storage, opting to retain the complete prohibition on commercial hauling as a home occupation that we currently have in the interim zoning regulations. I would note that this was the only instance where the Steering Committee differed from the staff recommendation. For significant structures, as I also indicated in my Director's Report, this ordinance was not approved by the City Council, as we had hoped it would be, on November 20th, and therefore, we have had to remove this map and list from the draft regulations. We have replaced them with the existing map of the Park Avenue Significant, Park Avenue District Significant Structures, which is already adopted, was adopted years ago. And then we've just simply left the criteria for significant structures in the rest of the city. Slightly modified as proposed in the new ordinance. And everything else in this chapter, in this section, has remained the same. But the map and list are now gone. They will be put back eventually, when the City Council hopefully ultimately approves them. So that will be a future amendment to these planning regulations. But for right now, they're, they're not in there.
Is there any movement? I mean, what is the process for that?
Well, we have been directed to meet with property owners and other interested citizens. We have put together a report to the Council, which I believe is going next Tuesday, that will, that says how we intend to proceed on this and who we intend to invite to be in this task force. And we hope to meet with the task force probably in January and maybe bring back the list and map to the Council in February.
Great.
But hopefully, within the next few months, this will be resolved. The issue of private property access from parks and greenways was discussed extensively at the Joint Study Session, and staff was asked to go back and think about it, so we did. And we brought a proposal to the Steering Committee, which the Steering Committee approved. And that was to modify this provision so that it only requires a minor conditional use permit as opposed to a major. And that the one-time fee, which will now be based on the appraised value of the access as opposed to some number that we come up with and put in the master fee schedule, which certainly seems much more reasonable, the appraisal seems much more reasonable, that fee can be waived by the City Council if the Council determines that the public, the benefit to the public, to the city outweighs the benefit to the private property owner. So there's still a fee, but the Council can waive it if they think it's in the city's interest. LED signs, hot topic. They now require major design review, i.e. U. And they need to be evaluated for conformance with the International Sign Association's Recommendation for Nighttime Brightness. This is a placeholder until we develop more precise standards for these things, which we hope to do within the next few months. And that, like the significant building structures, will come back as a future amendment to the code.
In that case, you'd have an exact number of the intensity of the light?
Right, right. It would be sort of like the noise standards. It would be cannot exceed X number. And finally, on cell phone antennas, they will now all require major design review, which means the Planning Commission will be approving or not all future cell phone antennas.
Even if they're not visible?
No, not if they're not visible. If they are completely hidden from public view, including all of their associated equipment, then no design review would be required at all because design review by definition is only for exterior changes. So if you can't see it, there's no design review. But if you can see it, it will be coming to the Planning Commission. As I said, there were no changes to Chapter Six, Subdivision Regulations. So moving on to Chapter Seven, just a few changes here. Expiration of permits, it was, we've clarified that if a building permit is issued, and you may remember this issue came up with the Ocean Avenue project recently, if a building permit is issued but it expires with no work being done, then the associated planning permit would also expire. However, it can be renewed if it has not exceeded its three-year, three years from the initial approval. If it's more than three years from the initial approval when the building permit expires, then the planning permit is just dead, and they have to start all over again. But if that hasn't happened, then they can apply for renewal of it up to the three years. Solar panels, turns out state law precludes us from doing any kind of design review on solar panels, so we have amended the regulations to reflect that. Back to the collection bins, we've added them explicitly as, into the list of things that require minor design review, even if a building permit for them is not required. So we'll keep an eye on these things and make sure they, you know, look appropriate.
No, no use permit would be required, though?
No, we're not proposing use permit.
Okay.
We're just proposing minor design review. And for minor conditional use permits, we've clarified that to say that uses of special concern would not be able to be approved at a staff level, would not be eligible for a minor use permit, even if it was just going into an existing building, the bar or nightclub or whatever, we feel should still come to the Planning Commission. So if it's on that list of uses of special concern, then it would not be eligible for minor use permit. And finally, Chapter Eight, Definitions. We have integrated into the general definitions in alphabetical order all of the terms that are included in special definitions with a cross-reference to where those definitions were, would be found. And that was Commissioner Moss's suggestion, and I think it's a good one. It makes it much easier to find things. So it's either defined there, or it tells you where the section is where it is defined. So those are the major changes. Our recommendation, and the recommendation of the zoning update Steering Committee, is that you approve these new planning regulations and recommend that the City Council adopt them. And with that, I'd be happy to respond to any questions you may have.
Questions? All right, thank you, Charlie.
You're welcome.
This is a public hearing? Are there any?
I just want to note that you have a letter, an eight-page letter, from Jeff Sears from Wareham, that came in at 5:00 this afternoon, commenting on a number of sections in the report. Although it was received rather late, I have gone through it, and I am prepared to respond to you on every comment in his letter.
Thank you, Charlie. If anyone's wishing to speak?
Let the owner come forward.
Oh, yes. No, no, this is a public hearing. If there's anyone wishing, please come forward.
Hello.
Hello?
Stuck in behind your back.
Hello, Carol.
I'm Carol Handelman, and I live at 105948th Street, and I am the last person standing who was on the first committee.
First and the last.
The first and the, the first and the last, Alpha and the Omega of the update committee. We worked very hard. I think we've come up with some wonderful suggestions, so I would urge you to approve them. And I also would like to commend the staff that we worked with. Charlie has been brilliant. Deborah was and would probably still be brilliant if she were still with us, and so I want to thank them for really making this happen for us. And so I commend the work and the staff to you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Commissioners. I'm Nathan Landell, Planner for AC Transit. And I also want to start by commending the staff and the commission. A long time ago, I drafted a zoning ordinance, and I have some idea of what it entails, and that wasn't even as comprehensive as this one. I want to make two comments and one suggestion for a change that I think can be accommodated without too much disruption. I'll just comment that I think there's a lot of very good stuff in here for transit-oriented development, which is a concern of AC Transit's. And you heard about the parking, which I think is a tremendous opportunity and an opportunity to allow developers and builders to propose how much parking they think is needed. So I think that's, that's really, really useful. And also that you've carried forward the transit hub concept around both the Amtrak Station and 40th and San Pablo, which is something we've worked on in the general plan. My second comment has to do with our facility, our yard. We don't have any plans at this point to do anything additional in it. It may be that that comes to be. I think we'll just have to see how that is. I'm a little bit concerned that the height limit there is, is 30 feet. That's about the size of existing structures, and buses are tall. But I won't say to you that there's anything that we need to have done at this point because we, there's no, there's no immediate plan. The third point, which actually was raised by Greg Harper at an AC Transit Board of Directors meeting, he raised the concern that the design review criteria don't explicitly recognize transit, don't mention our wonderful guidebook, Designing with Transit. But I think more importantly, that transit's not a specific criteria there. And so what I would like to suggest is that in Section 9, 9-7.406, that... And so what I would like to suggest is that in Section 9-7.406, that in the list of design review evaluation items, that you add transit access in facilities. And I think that's very consistent with the general plan's focus on identifying transit streets and the city's whole effort here to move towards different kinds of transportation. Thanks very much, and congratulations on getting to this point.
Thank you.
I'm Jeff Sears with Wareham. I did send an eight-page letter late in the day. But we wanted to comment on the most recent draft, which was only issued on the 6th. We've certainly been invested in the process for the several years. We've commented on it verbally and in writing during that, including most recently at the study session on the 30th, we were at the preservation discussion with council. So we gave a lot of detail because 400 pages of zoning regulations are detailed, and the details matter here. But to use my time effectively, I just want to talk about major points. First of all, we have a lot of properties in Emeryville, and we think many of them are successful. I think you're probably familiar with them. And so there were a number of places where we see the zoning has sort of caused, you know, sort of non-conforming grandfathered uses that I think you probably like. And we wanted to point that out as maybe ways certain uses could be expanded. Our comments focus mostly on ground floors, because our buildings mostly are in the office technology zone, and those kind of uses are allowed. But our ground floors have many different, typically small, uses: retail, car rental shops, which are in the category of horrid no-no's, you know, I mean, you call them uses of special concern. We have very tiny ones. And next to a transit center, those are really key last-mile connections. And I think, you know, we have three of those right around the train station, and we have a car-share pod, which are on sort of the super-nice list in your, you know, the things that are always ancillary uses. We think rentals and car pods are almost exactly the same thing, so they should be treated more similar to encourage that stuff. Now, I know that's different than a 50,000-square-foot, 100-car parking lot with rental cars. But so that's an example. Little restaurants and retail are requiring use approvals, whether they're major or minor. I mean, we appreciate the minor category. But again, I think these are things, to some degree, you should allow as a right to encourage us to do them, as opposed to say, well, a restaurant's hard to do, so I'll just put another use in there that's maybe what's going on in the whole rest of the building. So on the street level, we're saying, maybe you should give some flexibility in small doses to encourage the kind of stuff you see in our buildings now. So the details are in this memo. I tried to give you some examples, because we have a lot of restaurants. If all of those needed use permits, either minor or major, maybe there wouldn't have been as many as we have there. Roof projections, some of the changes you've talked about, we're very familiar with what is on roofs and what are needed by buildings to operate. So the whole sort of trying to hide ugliness, we're on board with. But some of the details about five-foot levels and percentage of roof coverage, we think won't work for most office buildings, certainly won't work for lab buildings. And we've recommended some ways, and maybe there are others, to try to let this stuff be on the roof so the buildings work in a way that isn't objectionable aesthetically or by noise to surrounding people. But I think the way a lot of those are written are challenging. We couldn't build many of our buildings within those limitations. And again, sort of details there matter. The development bonuses are great. We pointed out, can I have another minute, or do I need to sit down?
Pass the chair.
May I?
Please.
Okay, thank you. Great concept. We wanted to give you the benefit of our experience, because some seem so tough you'll never get them, and some seem sort of really easy. And in general, I think you're not going to want every project to have this category and none of the others. So we made some recommendations. There are things like, we have a lot of alternative energy production. We have gas-fired cogens here in Emeryville. We have solar in other places. We think some of the percentage, first of all, you asked for a total percentage of onsite alternative energy based on the building use. That really penalizes heavy energy uses, like a research facility that can use four to eight times the energy of a normal office building. And so you're setting a standard for alternative energy that we'll never meet, so we won't do it. So we wanted you to think about that. And then there are some other ways of having sustainable alternative energy that's distributed, not on-site. You know, there's renewal energy credits now. You can buy power from providers that's created renewably, and we've suggested maybe you want to think of some of that. I mean, Marin County is now a seller of that to its consumers. I don't know that you want to go into that business, but it's, we can purchase those things. So you may want to think about, because again, I think the goal is to encourage renewability, not just renewability that's on-site. And if you make it too hard, they won't do it. The preservation ordinance is separate from tonight, but we've been commenting on that. But we, again, believe in preservation, but I think some of the things that are in the zoning will want to change if that changes, because you can have a property where much of your development opportunity is taken from you. And I think what you want to do is encourage people like us or others to preserve the old building. They're more likely to do that if they don't lose all their development rights. If the only way to get into development rights is rip it down, they're going to ask to rip it down. So for example, we have some sites that are very big on multiple density and height levels. And that special building may be on one of the dense parts, meaning allowable FAR is high there, and its existing condition is low FAR. And another piece of the site has a lower FAR. We would think you'd want to encourage us or someone else to preserve the old building, maybe by letting them have some of the FAR on the other part of the site. Now, I'm talking about all my own site, not selling it across city lines and all, you know. But we'll give those comments through the preservation. It's a very complicated document. It's clearly tried to be user-friendly. It's more user-friendly. And we just made comments that hopefully will help people pursue the things that we think you want them to pursue. So like Charlie, I could answer questions about any of those details.
Thank you.
My name is Larry Farb. I'm a property owner in Emeryville. First, I attended some of the zoning steering committee meetings, and I also want to commend the staff and the citizen participants of that process. It was, and congratulate them on the comprehensive document that they created. Whenever, there's always disagreement, but it is still quite an impressive document. My issue, what I want to bring to your attention, involves my property and a number of other properties in what's called now the IL, the INL Zone. And in 2004, the City Council took a number of the parcels that was formerly called the IG Zone and put them into what was then the IL Zone for the purpose of being able to build public housing, multifamily housing. And the new plan in the INL Zone, housing is not permitted. It's Xed out. But yet, in 2004, the city itself and some of the officials that still remain in office came to us, property owners, and asked us if we would allow housing built on our property. And we agreed, and we thought it would be a great idea. So there was actually an ordinance passed. I have a copy of it here, if anyone would like to have it in their file. And it allows housing. So now the plan has changed, and suddenly housing isn't allowed, but yet there are many parcels, including my own, which housing is very suitable for. I think it would be desirous of the city to have it there. And yet, there's no provision. It's just simply not permitted, even though people want it, wanted it, voted on it on their own. It's just not permitted. So I would think, I would suggest the modification for multifamily housing in the INL Zone for parcels that clearly can support housing, not ones that really can't, and have some kind of asterisks or something that qualifies or lightens, or at least gives us a chance to have a hearing, and just simply doesn't make it not permitted. So that's what I would ask you to do, because I think it's good for the city. It's what the city wanted, and it's just, we got caught up in just a red line that got drawn around our property, and now we can't, just can't have housing. You know, it takes an amendment to the code to do it. So I would hope you would change that. And even the people who are very in favor of the industrial zone have no problem with this, is from what they tell me. They really don't see it as any infringement on their rights as industrial users. So thank you for your consideration. And if you want a copy of the ordinance passed in 2004, I have it here. It might help you look it up if you were interested in doing that. Thank you.
Thank you.
I just watched Mr. Sears make a three-minute presentation, and then he asked if he could have another minute, which he granted him. And he spoke for more than two more minutes. Pardon me, I ran off to Sears. Just wanted to say that I think that residents should be given at least as much access to the government, their government, as business owners. And I'm saddened to see you grant Mr. Sears of Wareham more time than you have granted residents in the past. I just don't think it's right. I think residents should, like I said, should be, have at least as much access, and I object to that.
Thank you.
Do you want to speak for five minutes?
Are there any other comments? Sorry, questions or?
Charlie, are you going to respond to? Chair Krummerly?
I want to close the public hearing first.
Yes.
So that concludes our public hearing. And now, take it back to the commission for comments and questions.
I'd be happy to respond to the public comments if you would like.
Yeah, if you could respond to Jeff Sears' right?
Well, if you don't mind, I'll respond to everybody's comments.
Yes, please.
First of all, Carol, thank you very much. I don't think that requires any further response than to say thank you. And thank you for being the last person standing. Mr. Landau's comment, I don't disagree. I appreciate what he's saying about, oh, one thing I would mention about the height limit, it's 30 feet by right. It's 55 feet with a use permit. So it can go up to 55 feet. 30 is not absolute. But in terms of transit as a factor in design review, seems absolutely appropriate. I would note, however, that the list of things in Section 97406 that he referenced, there's actually the names of the chapters in the city's adopted design guidelines. So that's where that list came from. And there is a section in the design guidelines about different street types, and transit streets is one of those street types. And also, so there are guidelines for that. And also for the transit hub overlay zone, there are guidelines for that. And the transit hub zone specifically references those guidelines in this document. So, I mean, I think it is addressed. Mr. Farb's comments about residential in the light industrial area is not a new request. The steering committee debated that at length and decided on what we have there today. And I would note that that would not really be an amendment to these planning regulations. That would be an amendment to the general plan, because the general plan says where you can have housing and where you can't have housing. And that's one of the areas where the general plan says you can't have housing. So if it's the city's desire to change that policy, which my impression is that it is not, because this issue has been raised before, we'd have to go back and amend the general plan. And then the planning regulations would be modified to conform to that. And with regard to Mr. Sears, I have gone through these eight pages of comments, and rather briefly, obviously, since I only had less than an hour to do it. And I would like to respond to them. First, with regard to the car rental agencies and the car-share pods, I'd like to correct Mr. Sears. The car rentals are not listed in Section 92701 as a use of special concern. There is a broader category called motor vehicle uses or something like that. It's got a bunch of subcategories. I think four of those subcategories are listed in the uses of special concern, including gas stations and auto repair and car washes, I think. Car rental agencies are not one of the things that are listed, so they're not uses of special concern, which means that if a car rental agency wanted to come into an existing building, it could be approved as a minor conditional use permit. I would note that all of the existing car rental agencies that Wareham has in their property came to the Planning Commission and got major conditional use permits. That, under the new code, is no longer required. Now those things can be approved at a staff level. I would also note, just in general, about these kinds of uses, that there is also another way to handle that, which is that when a building comes in for its original approval, either through design review or use permit, and has to come to the Planning Commission anyway, you know, a new, large building is always going to have to come to the Planning Commission for approval, we can include in the conditions of approval, as we usually do, a list of future uses that are allowed in the building. And as long as the applicant and staff can think of what all the possible future uses would be that they'd want to have on the ground floor in that building, and we put that in the conditions of approval, then no further process is required to get those uses in there. If there ends up being a use that nobody had thought of, that wants to come into that building, and it's on the list of things that are permitted in that zoning district, say, conditionally, then that can be done at a staff level as a minor use permit, as long as it's not one of the uses of special concern. So I think most of the, most if not all of the examples that Mr. Sears mentioned did previously come to the commission for a use permit. And under these new regulations, they would no longer have to. So I think that is an improvement. The Bureau Restaurant, which just opened, and by the way, if you haven't tried it, it's great, that was included in the conditions of approval. We said we wanted a restaurant on the ground floor when the Emery Station Greenway project was approved. So that restaurant never came to the Planning Commission or staff or any kind of a use permit approval, because it was already approved when you approved the building. Backing up to research and development, his suggestion about including associated office space and fabrication and scale-up facilities, I think we can do that. That's a small change to the definition of the use, which I think that would clarify things. So I don't have any problem with that.
I'm sorry, which change was that?
This is on the second page of his letter, towards the top, Section 92421. It's the definition of the research and development use classification. And he proposes to add a little language to that, to say that it includes associated offices and fabrication and scale-up facilities. So, I mean, that would just be my recommendation to you. I think we could add that if that's your pleasure. All of these things that he mentioned, this down here is bullet points as being permitted in the ground floor. Well, they're not permitted in the current code. Some of them might be. But all of them, if they're going into an existing building, if they're conditionally permitted, could be a minor use permit. And I would note that in the OT zone, restaurants are already in the table shown as a minor conditional use permit. One thing I would note about stores, though, the general plan has a description in it of the OT zone. And it explicitly says retail is only allowed as an ancillary use in that zone. And so to allow larger stores that were not just locally, you know, oriented, would require an amendment to that paragraph in the general plan. So, you know, a lot of these provisions came from the general plan, and we can't change them without going back and amending the general plan. So that's the story there on the retail. Let's see. Oh, in the neighborhood retail overlay zone, he mentions distinguishing between operations owned and operated by individuals versus chains. Well, the steering committee debated that, and that's kind of a touchy subject. There are cities that have adopted regulations about chain stores, which is sometimes known in the profession as, I'm sure Sean's familiar with this, formula-based retail. And it has been done, but it's very challenging, and it has been challenged legally. It's been upheld, but it's tricky to do. You know, it's like, well, you can have a small coffee shop that's owned by, you know, Joe and Fred, who live down the street, but you can't have a Starbucks that has the exact same area, you know? So the steering committee discussed this and decided they didn't want to go there, because it's just fraught with complications. So instead, we've done it by this market area and by the size of the facilities. And I would prefer. And I would prefer personally to keep it that way. He does note that in the neighborhood retail overlay zone, it says that you can't have office on the ground floor. And that is true. And I'm trying to remember why we said that. Because I don't believe it's in the interim zoning regulations. I checked the general plan description of neighborhood retail overlay, and it doesn't say that. So it doesn't come from the general plan. I think the staff felt, and the steering committee went along with this, that that use was just kind of a dead use. Although, not necessarily. If you can walk by and see people working in an office, it might be okay. He suggests that no more than 50% of the ground floor frontage be allowed to be office. And I personally wouldn't have a problem with that. I don't know how the commission feels about that.
So, I can't remember, is there anywhere that distinguishes between offices with walk-in clientele and not?
Oh, Arlie's got something here. What?
Assuming that the slightly outdated grid that we have is true on this, we did break it up into, for offices, we have general government and walk-in clientele.
Oh, that's right.
And for walk-in clientele, offices are permitted by right in the neighborhood retail.
Oh, right.
So we thought of that. You know, the idea is that it's more active. That's why we want the walk-in part allowed.
I forgot that we thought of that.
Yeah.
Thank you. In my one hour that I had before the meeting to go through this letter, that slipped past me. Okay, so I guess we've got that covered. So the thing is, if it's walk-in, then it is allowed in the neighborhood retail. But if it's just general office where they close the blinds and don't let you in, then it's not. So in that case, I would say maybe we shouldn't modify that. Concerning the allowed projections above the top of the building, we do acknowledge that these biotech buildings have got lots of stuff on top that is not typical of a non, you know, R&amp;D kind of a building. And I think the answer really is that all of that stuff can be approved with a minor conditional use permit, if it's after the fact. If it's while the building is being processed, it's already known and it's shown in the building plans, it could be approved as part of the design review for the building in the first place. So I don't really think we need to modify that. However, to allow exhaust stacks to extend to eight feet instead of five feet, I think that would be a minor tweak. I personally wouldn't have a problem with that. I don't know how the commission feels. I would note, though, that his description here of how you figure out how to screen the things by drawing a line from the ground level of the opposite side of the street up to the parapet is exactly the issue that the planning commission and city council discussed at the joint study session and decided that the screening should be from the same level, horizontal. So that was a change that was made, and this would basically undo that.
Can I just explain the intent there?
Well, you have to ask the chair.
May I?
And you need to come to the microphone.
Yes, I'd like to hear that, please.
This was hard to do without a diagram and...
Yeah, there you go.
We were trying to reference the amount of roof coverage. And so that diagonal, we figured the whole thing screened. So if you're looking head-on, it'd be screened. But that would define how much roof you can cover, so that line would sort of create the line of roof you can't cover. That was the intent.
I got it.
Because 20% of the roof is none of the roof. In our business, it's too tiny.
Right. Well, we looked, and I think at the steering committee, we pulled up on the Internet some aerial views of the city, and we looked at some typical buildings that kind of panned around and saw that for a typical office building, they don't have very much stuff on the roof. And the 5% is cumulative. It's like this little HVAC unit here, and this one over here, and this one over here. It's not like just a little area that's 5%. It's the cumulative area of all of those things. And we looked at a lot of different office buildings, and they all seem to have a small amount. The only ones that have a lot of stuff on the roofs are the biotech buildings like Wareham's. And I think that personally can be handled through the minor use permit or design review with the original building. It's hard to otherwise come up with, well, I don't know. We could do a thing like what Mr. Sears is suggesting. But if you apply that to all buildings, then you could have stuff all over the place, which I think is more than what the steering committee wanted.
Thank you.
It's not a prohibition. It's just saying there's a process for...
May I ask a question about something you've spoken about also?
Sure.
It has to do with the ground floor. And I'm thinking of a specific building that we own, Heritage Square, single-story, huge long storefront along Hollis. That is in the neighborhood retail zone, overlay zone.
No, it's not.
Yeah, I think it is.
Heritage Square?
Yep. I think it is. It's colored yellow through the hatching, I think. It's hard, these get very tiny.
Yes, they do.
But so, anyway, that building today has retail, and it has Bucci's Restaurant. It has office, the rest. It's tremendously long. And what we're just trying to do is, you know, can we imagine local-serving retail 150 yards long on one street front? Because it's a long street front for us. No, can't. You know, that's like a shopping center. That's Powell Street Plaza, almost. I mean, half of it. And so we just don't want to have something that is going to lead us to have empty space. So if we built Heritage Square today, now, I understand we could come in if we were asking for approval of the building, but these zoning regulations go to existing buildings and what becomes non-conforming uses. And if those would go vacant for a year, the uses disappear. And in our business, stuff can stay vacant for longer than a year. So it's sort of, you know, and I appreciate you pointing out about the car rental agencies. We're just trying to make it not hard to have done what we've already done. So, and Heritage Square also, the medical is a major conditional use permit. And Heritage Square has a whole bunch of medical offices. It has a dentist. It has a physical therapist. It has an imaging center. We have a ground floor endoscopy center in Emery Station 1. And those are all major conditional use permits. And we think of them like office with clientele, walk-in. That's kind of what they are, right? They want to be on the ground floor because they have visiting clientele. But all those people would require major conditional use permits. And it just makes it a little less likely to happen. And we're just trying to make these things more likely to happen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, let me clarify on that once again. Under these regulations, if a use that requires a major conditional use permit is going into an existing building and not increasing the floor area of the existing building by more than a certain amount, then it can be, and it's not a use of special concern, then it can be approved as a minor conditional use permit. So any of those examples that Mr. Sears mentioned, if they're going into one of the existing Emery Station buildings, and it's not a use of special concern, staff can approve that.
Where do I find that?
Under the CM. In addition, under healthcare, the clinics and medical offices are already a CM in the office technology zone.
Okay, thank you. It's on Page 7-29, Section 97503A2, which is the definition of minor conditional use permits. It says, "A conditionally permitted use in any zoning district other than the RM zone," that's the residential neighborhoods, "in an existing building where the floor area is not increased by more than 10%, except uses of special concern." So any conditional use permit for any use in an existing building by definition is a minor conditional use permit.
Which number, Charlie?
It's on the top of Page 729. It's in red, because it was modified. So this, I'm sorry, this is kind of hard to see. This is the overlay zone map here. And just to, let's see, how can I make this bigger? Okay, well, I don't know how well you can see this, but Heritage Square is right here. And the neighborhood retail overlay is up here. So there's a little bit of Heritage Square that's in the pedestrian priority zone, but none of it is in the regional retail overlay. Because the regional retail overlay is focused, I'm sorry, neighborhood retail, neighborhood retail overlay, is focused on the neighborhood center, which is centered at the corner of 65th and Hollis. So, and that's quite a distance from that intersection. So Heritage Square is not in the regional retail, neighborhood retail, sorry, neighborhood retail overlay. Let's see. Okay, so I guess we don't need to make that change about offices, and we just talked about projections above the roof. And I, you know, I'm okay with eight feet for exhaust stacks. I don't know how the commission feels about that. Concerning the lower height limits and the 45-degree angle, actually, Mr. Sears says that shouldn't apply where the height district boundary is in the middle of a property. Actually, that's exactly where it does apply. Because if you have an intervening street, the width of the street is going to, if you superimpose that 45-degree angle on the width of the street, you're going to find that that entire 45-degree plane is going to be subsumed within the public right-of-way. So you would achieve it just by having the lower height on one side of the street and the higher height on the other side of the street. It's only where the two height districts are right smack next to each other that you need to do the 45-degree angle. And that's where it's in the middle of a piece of property. However, I'm going to jump ahead here for a second to the significant structures piece, where Mr. Sears suggests that if you're going to keep a significant structure, you should be allowed to spread your FAR over the entire property. That is true, and you can do that. In the section of the code that, in Chapter 4, where it talks about floor area ratio and how to interpret the floor area ratio map, it does say, you calculate the floor area ratio, if you have a property and it's in two or more FAR districts, you calculate the floor area that's allowed in each FAR district that your property falls into, but then the resulting floor area can be put anywhere on the site. You still have to comply with the height limit for the individual portion of the property, which is where that 45-degree plane comes in. But the floor area itself can be put anywhere. So if you have a significant building that you're trying to save, and you want to, you know, really beef up the floor area on another part of the site, you can do that. And there's a similar thing for the height districts. You cannot do that. You have to keep the same height on every part of the property, unless you can move the boundary. There's also provision for moving the boundary. If more than 50% of the property is already in the higher height district, and the line, and the entire property can be put in the higher height district by moving the line less than 50 feet, then with a use permit, you can treat the entire site as if it was in the higher height district. And the same with FAR. If you can't do that, then you have to respect the height limits on each part of the site. But for FAR, you can spread it over the entire site. Let's see. Oh, tower separation. He didn't mention this in his verbal comments, but he suggests that the separation of the railroad tracks should be sufficient. Well, I guess my response to that would be, first of all, the railroad tracks are 100 feet wide already. And if the building, if the towers are set back, you know, substantial distance on either side of the tracks, then they probably would achieve this requirement anyway. But the point here is, what it says is that if you have two buildings, each of which is more than 100 feet tall, they must be physically separated by the height of the taller of the two. So if one's 150 and the other one's 175, they have to be at least 175 feet apart. I would argue that from a distance, you're not going to know if there's a railroad track between them or not. So I don't really think an intervening railroad track should come into play here, personally.
I'm sorry, when we're talking about towers, so we're talking about, like, building towers, like tall buildings, that's what we're talking about?
Buildings, yes. And this is in the 100-plus height zone. And actually, there is only one parcel in the 100-plus height zone that is on the east side of the railroad tracks, and that is the Wareham Transit Center site, for which 165-foot tower has already been approved. So it's kind of a moot point. Under development bonuses, he does make, I think, you know, this is, well, reasonable is the word he uses, and I think it's a reasonable point that the bonuses are only available if the things that the developer's providing are beyond normal requirements, and how do you decide what's a normal requirement? Unfortunately, that isn't really an exact science, because the commission and council on a case-by-case basis can decide what conditions you want to impose. And then if it goes beyond that, then it would be a bonus thing. I think what we can say is that legally, we can't require things that aren't reasonable. There has to be a reasonable proportionality between the conditions that the commission imposes and the magnitude of the project. And I would say that if the developer voluntarily wants to do more than that amount, then that's what you get the bonus for. Now, how you put an exact number or quantity on that, I don't know. I suspect Commissioner Moss has had to wrestle with this issue as well. Concerning the in-lu fees, he suggests a square footage basis instead of a construction valuation basis. You know, I think that's another way to go. Conceptually, I think that's a fine idea, especially if a building such as a biotech lab has a really high construction valuation. That means your in-lu fee is going to be a lot higher than a building of the same size that has a lower construction valuation. So maybe square footage would be more reasonable. In the short time I've had to review this letter, I don't know what the number would be. I don't know what dollar figure we would put on per square foot. Construction valuation is easier, because that's already got a dollar figure attached to it, and you just take a percentage of that. But I would also suggest that in this case, if this is going to be an onerous, and I wouldn't say requirement, because none of these are requirements. These are all, you know, bonuses. These are public benefits that the developer wants to voluntarily put forward to get a bonus. If this one costs too much, you just don't pick this one. You pick a different one. So while conceptually, I don't have an issue with changing it to the square footage basis, I don't know what number to put there. And I don't know if anybody else does. But the construction valuation is just easier. It's easier to use. We based a lot of things on construction valuation.
And it does, I'm sorry, so right now, does it specify, it specifies a number?
It's a percent. There's several things in the bonus chart that are based on construction value. If you want to pay an in-lu fee instead of doing, like open space, for example, if instead of a certain amount of open space, if you provide a certain amount of open space, then that's worth a certain number of points. I think it's a percentage, actually, of the floor area of the building. But if you want to pay an in-lu fee instead of providing the open space, then the amount you have to pay in order to get a certain number of points is based on the construction valuation of the project.
But right now, the regulations stipulate that percentage.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, I, do you have it there, Michael? Thank you. It's contribution to citywide park fund, 10 points for every 1% of project construction valuation up to 50 points.
Okay.
Now, I mean, we could fiddle with those numbers. You'd have to provide 5% of your construction valuation to get 50 points, but 50 points is a lot of points, so. And there's a couple of others that are like that, too. And I think they all have the same percentage. Under alternative energy, well, again, apparently, the biotech buildings use a lot of energy, in which case I would say that this particular public benefit maybe is not the right one to pick for that kind of project. Maybe you pick a different public benefit. And we've just added a tier for 100%, which is zero net energy. And Mr. Sears says even a level of 50% is difficult to attain. So I think it depends on what the project is. Because certainly, there are projects that are attempting to be zero net energy.
Do we allow that energy to come from off-site, as Mr. Sears was asking?
Not currently, not the way it's written now. I think that's not a bad suggestion, this renewable energy credits. I haven't really looked into it, so I don't know exactly what it should say. But I don't, in concept, I think that would be a reasonable thing, or an interesting thing, at least to think about, adding to the chart. Underwater efficiency, he says that East Bay Mudd does not have a gray water supply. Well, gray water doesn't come from East Bay Mudd. Gray water is on-site. It's water that's reused on the site. And that the rainwater recapture is unworkable, giving, you know, some numerical examples here. It does sound like for that particular project, it probably wouldn't have worked. The language that we have, which is fairly precise, came from Berkeley's program. Berkeley has a rainwater recapture program, and we looked at it, and we just used the same language that they used. Except in Berkeley, I think, well, I guess it's not a requirement. It's if you're going to do it, this is what you have to do, kind of thing. So we just put the same thing in there. Let's see. On undergrounding of utilities, he asks what is normally required. Well, normally, the only requirement for undergrounding, if there is one at all, would only apply to the frontage of the property itself. And that's what was the case for the Emery Station-Greenway project, I believe. And many times, we don't require undergrounding because it's just too expensive in proportion to the size of the project. So it's considered a bonus because if the developer wants to pay for it, you know, that should be worth something. That should give them some density bonus.
And those requirements would normally be found probably in the Public Works chapter of the municipal code or something like that?
No, they're typically on the conditions of approval. There's not a codified requirement for it.
Oh, okay.
It's something that just comes up in individual building, uh, project approvals. But it's like six hundred dollars a linear foot, which if you add it up, gets real expensive, real, real quick. For TDM, he suggests that another in-lu fee could be made to the Emeryville Child Development Center. I think that's an interesting concept. I think that might be something we might want to add to the chart. Under small businesses, we did wrestle with this. And actually, I believe the existing interim zoning regulations has something about how many square feet of space you have to provide in the building and so forth. And actually, what's in the, in the draft code now was suggested by the Economic Development Director because she felt that the idea of these public benefits is that they're supposed to be something that's lasting, something that goes on, you know, for a long time, a permanent part of the structure. Either that or a contribution to the city for some kind of a program or something. The problem with the small business thing is there's no way to really ensure that these provisions would, would, would continue on the project for a long time. And instead, there is this, I forget what it's called, but there is a small business fund of some sort. And so that benefit was changed at the, at the suggestion of the Economic Development Director to be a contribution to that fund instead of a certain amount of space in the building. Under minimum setbacks, he says that should be made clear it applies to residential lots only. Well, that is specified in Section A. So I don't think we need to say it again in Section B. No reduction in off-street parking. Well, this is sort of a hot topic. And the problem is here for, if, if spaces in a building are leased out to, to people who don't work or have space in the building, parking spaces are leased out, then they may not be available to the people in the building if they want them in the future. Now, that item that was approved by the Steering Committee on a five-to-three vote did allow this situation for residential projects. If you want, we could suggest that it be extended to commercial projects as well with a proviso that the spaces would have to be, you know, given up with, on thirty days' notice if some, if a tenant of the commercial building needed that space. I don't really see that as being all that different from the residential example. I would note, though, that the Steering Committee did not approve that concept unanimously. And it would probably garner some dissension at the council level, certainly. For pedestrian circulation, he says a four-foot sidewalk is excessive. Well, four-foot is the minimum that's required by ADA. And I think four feet is a reasonable amount, reasonable size. On the estimated parking demand, there's an example here about Summer Summer Thai, I think, or a Crown Floor Restaurant. It says, yeah, it says the parking requirement is eight per thousand. Well, that's true, but that's the starting point. That's the demand. So then you take two-thirds of that, which gets you down to somewhere around six or so per thousand, or a little less than six per thousand as the minimum. And this particular example is within the transit hub overlay zone around the Amtrak station, which cuts the parking requirement further in half now. So for Summer Summer Thai, as an example, under our proposed regulations, the requirement would actually be two-point-six-seven per thousand. That would be the minimum that you could have, as opposed to eight per thousand. Also, I would note that when you calculate the parking requirement for an individual use, you deduct the first fifteen-hundred square feet. So for a thirty-five-hundred-square-foot restaurant, you are calculating the parking on two-thousand square feet instead of fifteen-hundred square feet. And the reason for that was to try to, you know, reduce the amount of parking that little businesses had to provide. So, you know, I think we've kind of covered that issue. On the design of parking, it says parking should be possible no more than one city street from the subject site. Well, there is a provision in there that allows for that. It's the alternative parking program. If you can't provide all the parking on the site, then you can apply for the alternative parking program where you can have the parking on an adjacent or even a distant site as long as the walk is not too far. The lights in the garage, he makes the point that there is a provision that says they have to be turned off in the daytime. That's to save energy. But he does make the point that some, sometimes a garage, the interior of a garage, especially, I guess, an underground garage, would be very dark, could still be very dark in the daytime and should be allowed to have the lights on. Well, I think that was the intent, but it wouldn't hurt to clarify that the lights can be on in the daytime if it's needed for security. Long-term bike parking, I think perhaps this is just an issue of semantics. He says that they don't know what that means. Well, long-term bike parking just means employee parking, basically. It's the parking, bike parking for the people who are going to park there all day and, in a secure locked room or something, as opposed to the customers who are coming for an hour or so and bike, park on a bike rack in front.
So maybe a better term would be secured bike parking or something?
Uh, perhaps. But I would note that it's pretty well-defined, I think, in the code. And this section is simply a carryover from our existing code. This is already in the code. It's been in the code since Diana wrote this section, I don't know what, five years ago or more. The only difference is that we've doubled the requirement from one space for every twenty parked car spaces to one space for every ten.
It does talk about twenty-four-hour storage, so that was why I was confused.
Well, I suppose if an employee rode their bike to work and then it started raining and they took the bus home, they should be able to leave their bike overnight in the, in the bike room? You know, I think that's, that's what it means. Existing trees, well, this, you know, this was what the council directed us to think about, and we did. And it was approved by the Steering Committee. And I would say that this is simply a difference of opinion on policy. So I wouldn't recommend any change there. Although, I would note that I think it's pretty flexible. It says that the city may require healthy trees to be preserved. You don't have to require it. It just, it, and actually, you already have the authority to do that. But what this does is just makes it explicit that you have that authority. So I wouldn't recommend any change there. The issue about larger landscapes is directly from the Water Efficient Landscaping Ordinance, which is already adopted. And we're just renumbering that code section. So this, that is nothing new. And actually, that's a state requirement. So we, I don't think we can really change that. I don't know that there's much more to say about significant structures. That will be coming back to the council for when they finally decide that they're going to adopt the map and list. And we'll just put it in the new code when that happens. And I already explained how the FAR works, so you can do that. Under the sidewalk cafes and the issue of the public sidewalks, I don't think we really need to say that because in that same article, sidewalk is defined in the back. And it does say they're public because they're public right-of-way. If it's not public, then you don't need to get a sidewalk cafe permit because you're on your own property. Under the monument signs, I believe what he's referring to here are the individual signs for individual store, individual establishments. Those are limited to six feet. However, for site identification signs, which can be approved by the Planning Commission, they can be more than six feet. And there can be more than one. And so that, there is a whole separate provision in that table for the larger monument signs, which maybe was overlooked. On the high-rise ID sign, the comment is that, that it should be clear that that's not the ground floor. Well, the table that talks about the high-rise ID sign, there's a column that says location of sign and it says top of building. So I think it's pretty clear that we're not talking about the ground floor. And finally, on minor design review, it should be clear that, that's for new landscaping and not for renovation and upkeep of existing landscaping. The section on applicability of design review, which is nine-seven-four-oh-two, says that it applies to changes in landscaping. So it does not apply to the routine maintenance or upkeep of existing landscaping. But if there was a major change, a major renovation and redesign of the existing landscaping, then yes, that would be subject to minor design review. So I believe that's already specified. So in summary, the, the revisions that I would recommend based on Mr. Sears' comments would be enhancing the definition of research and development. Thinking about perhaps allowing exhaust stacks to go eight feet above the height limit as opposed to five feet and still be within that ten or twenty percent of the area. We could think about adding a square footage basis for the in-lu fees, but I'm not sure how to say it. We could also put in a credit, a bonus for renewable energy credits as opposed to just energy efficiency in the building itself. We could add to the TDM benefit something about an in-lu fee to the Child Development Center. We could add a provision that says in garages that the lights can stay on in the, at night, I mean, in the daytime, if it's for security reasons. And that would be it. That would be my suggested modifications based on Mr. Sears' letter. And I believe that covers all the comments that the speakers made.
Thank you. That was very thorough and helpful.
That was helpful.
Can I ask a couple other questions of staff before we move on to discussion? So I, I was wondering, I was hoping that you, well, when the city council, when the significant structures ordinance went before the city council, other than kind of directing staff to refine the list, were there any specific concerns that they had or ways that they suggested to refine the list?
I might ask Diana, if she recalls. I don't think they said anything specific. It was more in reaction to about a half a dozen different property owners that spoke, many of whom actually didn't have buildings on the list, even though they thought they did. There were several suggestions. One, one suggestion was to increase the number of criteria that a building would have to meet in order to be on the list from five to six, for example. I believe there, well, they referenced the, Commissioner Cardoza had, as you may remember, a number of comments. And we, Diana, went and took pictures or selected pictures of each of the buildings that Commissioner Cardoza said he felt should not be on the list. And I think there were a couple that he said definitely should be on the list. And we included that in the council packet. Several council members said they agreed with Commissioner Cardoza, although I'm not sure that they went building by building. But they, some of them said they generally agreed with that. Other than that, Diana, do you remember anything else?
I think that was about it. I tried to figure, well, based on what, well, you're here, so I don't have to try to guess what you meant. But when I was presenting to council, I was saying, I think the building, he said the buildings that he didn't like were, they were small. They were plain. Some of them were partly boarded up. So I'm sort of thinking about using those to help win over the list.
I don't remember specifically at this point. Generally, I thought there were too many buildings.
Yeah, well, the council kind of said that, too. They, they, they didn't really know how to pare it down. I think that's why they told us to go back and meet with the task force and figure it out.
Yeah.
So that's the charge of this task force.
I thought Diana did a, a very good job for a very difficult assignment. You know, I don't know how you rate buildings.
Right, right.
And then the other question I had was, can you tell us what, I'm curious what the concerns of the Steering Committee were regarding the, was it, commercial hauling as a home occupation?
Well, I think we've had a couple of examples in town of ones that have turned out rather disastrously with trucks that, you know, park in the street and have their loads all falling out or all over the yard or whatever. So that's why staff recommended that as long as they screen everything, so there isn't all this, you know, appearance of, of just junk line all over the place, that maybe it should still be allowed. It's more like an office. You're just running it out of your home with a truck, you know, that comes and goes periodically. But I think the Steering Committee felt that it was, had, had too much potential for just falling apart, even if you have the provision about screening. Now, I might defer to the two Steering Committee members who are on the commission if they have any further recollection about this point.
That's what I remember as well. That in the past, it has fallen apart.
Yeah.
And it's been very difficult to pull it back together. So.
I mean, commercial hauling really isn't, it's not defined as a use classification, but it's a thing that we've had a problem with in the past. And I would say uses of special concern are not allowed to be home occupations. So if commercial hauling were defined as a use classification, it would probably be a use of special concern and therefore, it wouldn't be allowed as a home occupation. I think that's kind of how it works.
More questions? I was thinking maybe we could just kind of go down the line here and talk about what we want.
Okay. All right. Well, I just want to also commend the staff and the Steering Committee for their hard work on this. And thank you, Carol, for being the, the last person standing, if you will. Let's see, where to start? I had a couple of comments on things, like, things that were on this, the list of modifications from the, the last Steering Committee meeting.
Decision chart?
Yeah, the decision chart.
Actually, I can bring that up here if you want to all, whoops, not that one. No, wait, not that one either. That one. There it is. Okay.
So the one being the, the commercial hauling that I just asked a question about. So I think my intent in bringing that up in the, our joint study session was to not preclude somebody who owned a pickup truck from having a business where they just help people move and move things from point A to point B. But I understand what you, you know, the concerns about it. I, I guess I would maybe then further add the condition that commercial vehicles not be used, that, that a vehicle other than your personal vehicle not be used. I think that's a, that's a requirement for home occupations that I've seen before that I think is, is workable. And then the other thing from this chart that I want to comment on is what, what I thought was one of my, one of my most unoffensive, uncontroversial comments from the studies, from the, the joint study session was, was not recommended for approval by the staff. And that was the, it's number thirty-four on here. The, the bay windows not add square footage to the, to the, bay windows, bay windows that are projecting into a setback, not add square footage to a structure. So that's just something I see a lot as kind of a, a way to get around setback requirements, that, that someone will, rather than observe a setback, will propose a bay window, you know, which I think, I think under these regulations, it would have to be cantilevered, but it could be a very small cantilever. I mean, it, you know, you'd have to, you obviously have increased engineering costs from, and construction costs from doing that. But it, you know, it seems, it just seems to me still like it could be just a way to get around setback requirements. And I don't, I don't think that's the intent of the, of the exception for projections. I think the, the intent is for, more for things that are architectural features. So I, I definitely can see it for, you know, what most of us would consider a normal bay window. But I myself would, would include that as, as not something that contains habitable square footage. Then I have another comment which I, I meant to bring up at the, the joint study session, but it, in, in the interest, I, I kind of forgot. And in the interest of time, since that meeting went so long, I didn't want to make everyone too, too cranky. And I just, I just decided to not bring it up. But. But the, and I've further looked at this, but on page four dash four or five, at the top of the page, location of parking areas. I feel pretty strongly that the, that at a minimum, the findings for, the findings that need to be made in order to allow parking spaces to be in a front, required parking spaces to be in a front setback or in, yeah, to say, it is a front setback, should be, should be altered, should be sort of made easier. I, I would suggest actually striking finding B. And the reason I bring this up is because I, I think, well, I started thinking about this actually when we had the project on Forty-Fifth Street with the landscape plan that we considered. And in that project, there was a, there was a garage and a driveway in front of that garage. And then next to the garage, there was a parking pad and a driveway in front of that parking pad. And it just, it seemed like a lot of parking, and it's, and the reason for that was that we weren't counting the driveways as parking spaces. So we, you know, the, the regulations required somebody to build a parking, an uncovered parking pad behind the front setback, and then by virtue of that, they got a driveway to it, which could also be parking because you, you know, the city doesn't have, we don't have any regulations restricting people from parking in driveways. So you really get two parking spaces by requiring one. And so at a minimum, I would just like to give more flexibility to us to approve those type of exceptions. Because I, you know, I think it's something that we, that we should be able to, to consider without making all of these strict findings. And then...
Could I just respond to that?
Sure.
Well, I think the key word here is feasible. And I think it's up to the commission, when you make these findings, to decide what's feasible and what isn't. There is actually a definition in chapter eight of the word feasible. And it says, means capable of being accomplished in a successful manner within a reasonable period of time, taking into account economic, environmental, social, technological, and other relevant factors. I don't know where we got that from, but anyway, that's what's in there. Maybe out of Webster's dictionary. But in that case, I think it doesn't mean it's impossible to provide that parking somewhere else on the site. It just means that it wouldn't be accomplished in a successful manner. So, for example, I mean, in the, in that, in that case of that Forty-Fifth Street house, they could have put the parking between the two houses in the back where the patio was, which would have gotten rid of all that open space for the tenants. Now, is that feasible? You know, I think that's for the commission to decide if it's feasible. It's possible, but it might not be all that feasible if you still want to have open space, too. So I guess my concern with eliminating that finding is that if you do that, then all you're left with are basically design review findings. So essentially, you're saying, yeah, it's fine, if you, as long as you follow design review. And I think we want to say, well, it's not really fine. We don't really want parking in the front. Unless you just can't put it anywhere else, you know. So, I mean, that's my take on why this is written the way it is.
So I guess my, my response to that would be, you can, I guess you can be thinking about this, but I think in situations where we have tandem parking, where, or where we have, basically, I guess, if you're going to have kind of a standard, low-density residential parking situation where you, where you have a driveway or a, or a parking pad in the front of the property, then I don't think we get a lot of benefit from requiring that parking pad to be behind the, the front setback rather than where the driveway would normally be located.
Well...
Because we just, we just, and in essence, we get a, an extra-long driveway rather than a shorter driveway.
How about changing it to say something like that, to put the parking elsewhere would preclude an effective site layout? Or something like that? That's a little less onerous than saying it's not feasible. I mean, I don't know. Personally, I would, I'm reluctant to delete, to only leave findings that basically are design review. Because that implies that, yeah, it's okay to have parking in the front, as long as you screen it, you know. And the message that I have heard pretty consistently from the commission and council in the past has been, we don't like parking in the front. And we don't want to allow it unless, you know, unless you can't put it anywhere else.
Well, in a residential neighborhood, you get it anyway because they use the garage for a storeroom.
This is true. Well, I don't know. Anyway, that's my opinion.
Well, if I can just move on, then the, moving on to some of the public comments that we've received tonight. The, I just wanted to comment on the, the issue of, of energy efficiency and how that relates to the incentives program. I, I do think it's a good idea to include more flexibility in that, that, to allow, you know, at least some of, excuse me, at least some of the renewable energy to, to be, you know, to be produced off-site and be purchased. I think obviously we would want to ensure that that's done through a relatively long-term contract. And also, I, I'm just going to throw out there that we might, we might want to, we might want to place a maximum percentage on the renewable energy that's produced off-site. I don't, I don't know what that would be, but, I don't know. Something about it just doesn't, I mean, I'd be, I'd be curious to see what, what the rest of the commission thinks of that. Because I don't know why, but something about it just doesn't sit right to me about producing a hundred percent of the, of this bonus off-site. And...
We've got it in tiers. Fifteen percent is worth ten points, thirty percent is twenty, fifty percent is worth thirty-five, and a hundred percent is worth fifty. You could say, you know, up to fifty percent, which is worth thirty-five points, or up to thirty percent, which is worth twenty points, can be produced off-site or something like that. You don't have to necessarily give them the whole fifty points.
Right, yeah. Or we could say, you know, up to, up to fifty or sixty or whatever percent of the, of the renewable energy used for the, the bonus is...
Oh, okay.
Yeah, something like that. Let me see if I have any other comments here. I would, I think I would support also payments to the Child Development Center as an in-lu option for the bonus program. And I think that pretty much concludes my comments.
Okay. I have a few comments myself. I'm going to start with the bonuses, and I, I would agree about the alternative energy. It doesn't sit right with me either, that it could be a hundred percent off-site. I guess if I had to throw out a number, it'd probably be about fifty percent that could be produced off-site. And, and it, I think it should be tied to the life of the building, frankly. And also, I had on this, another layer of this bonus and the energy efficiency. I'm not sure how, so that would be public benefit number five. Since we're giving fifty points for a hundred percent of zero net energy, but we're giving thirty-five points for twenty percent energy efficiency over the California Energy Code, which I believe is stringent, however, that doesn't seem to, they don't, that doesn't jive to me. And I guess it was, there's also ten percent for fifteen points. So I'm not sure where that would go either. I'm not sure if the energy efficiency could be increased to fifty percent, thirty-five points, and thirty-five percent for ten, I'm sorry. Yeah, thirty-five percent for fifteen points. I'm not sure how that would play out, but it just doesn't seem to be even in terms of the benefit. Or maybe it could be reduced to twenty percent. I'm not, I'm not really sure.
They're, they're a little bit different.
Or I'm sorry, twenty points or something.
One, the alternative energy is about actually generating the energy, right? And the energy efficiency is how the building uses the energy. If it comes from an off-site source, you know, there are already energy requirements in the state code that are already pretty stringent. And this was quite a while ago, but I think we consulted with the building official and, you know, our plan check people about what's a reasonable amount to expect, and it's like twenty percent over the state requirements for energy efficiency, you know, double-pane windows and all, whatever, all the other stuff is, is, is a lot.
It's quite high.
Yeah. So that's kind of where that came from. There's also, you'll notice footnote one that says you can't double count. So if you get points in one, you can't get points in the other.
And also, I, for mechanical equipment, I actually believe that this should be required. It should not be a bonus, that it be, you know, penthouse. That there should be covered penthouses for the mechanical equipment. So I'm just throwing that out there. Twenty points is, is good, but I think, I wish it was, it was an actual requirement in this town. And the...
Well, yeah, okay. It's sort of a, it's sort of an optional requirement. I mean, if you look at the section that we talked about, about coverage of the roof of your stuff, that you can go up to twenty percent if you enclose it in a mechanical penthouse. And then otherwise, it's limited to ten percent of the area. And, and I think there's a note there that says, and if you do that, you also are eligible for some bonus points. So it's not required, but it is required if you want to have more than ten percent of the roof covered by stuff.
Okay.
So, well, I don't know.
Also, I thought long and hard after our joint meeting about family-friendly housing, and something didn't stick right with me there either, and I feel very strongly that we need more bedrooms. We need for larger families in this town. And reducing it to two-point-five bedrooms is not okay with me. I think it should stay to three. In terms of the amendments, the definition of R and D, that seems very straightforward, and I would, I would support that. In terms of the eight-foot as opposed to five-foot, I think, as you mentioned, Charlie, this could be approved at design review, and so I would not support the higher...
It would be a minor use permit.
I'm sorry, minor use permit. But I think, didn't you also say it could be during the design review process or...
Oh, yeah. If it's for, if it's after the fact, after the building is already built, and it's going to be added later, then it could be a minor use permit at staff level. If it's part of the original entitlement of the building, yeah, then you can approve it as part of the design review. I believe the commission would have to then approve a use permit for the stuff on the roof that exceeded, you know, five feet. But that would just be part of the entitlement process for the building.
And with the in-lu fees, I don't, I don't really have any thoughts about what percentages that could possibly be, so I don't feel comfortable in terms of thinking that would be a good thing to put forward.
You're referring to the basing it on square footage instead of construction valuation?
Correct, yes.
Yeah, I don't know.
I just don't know. I can't get my brain around that.
Can I just add something also? Is it, I just thought, if, also, if we tie it to square footage, but by virtue of tying it to construction cost, it kind of adjusts itself for inflation, right? Whereas if you tie it to square footage, it doesn't.
I would support the TDM for, for daycare and having some in-lu payments towards the Child Development Center. I think that was a good idea. And I agree with the lights in the garages. I actually had that same thought myself that, it's kind of like, that doesn't seem quite right, especially if they're going to be dark garages. So I would support that being changed. Those are my comments. Thank you.
Well, I have not served on these committees that have studied this for the past X number of years. So I don't know all the details, but I do think that Charlie made a very good presentation. And the modifications he's recommended to, for the WERUM questions, I think are very good, and I would go along with those.
Okay, so first of all, I'd also like to thank Carol for so many, many meetings and such great input throughout the whole process. Really thought-provoking stuff. And also staff, and it's like, things like the, the design, the decision guide was really helpful to really keep track of all these different things and who said what, when, and how this all came about. So that was, that was very helpful in, in coming down to this. So I really don't have many or any changes to be made to the body of the document itself. Really focus on some of the comments that we heard tonight from members of the public. And I guess on those, I'm really uncomfortable really making too many changes at this time and because there was such a long period that we had to really discuss these things. And so many of these things, there was great deliberation, like hours and hours at our steering committee meetings. And to make too many changes at this late in the game just doesn't seem right. That we're, that we're not giving it the thought of the, the many members on that steering committee that had all different views and some really opposing views, but we had a chance to really discuss things. So one thing I am concerned about those with Mr. Sears' comments is I'm concerned about having roofs that are usable for mechanical equipment that can function. And it was certainly my intent to make them that way. It was certainly my intent to make it so that penthouses are encouraged as a bonus. This isn't a requirement. This is something, again, it's a bonus. And I think a lot of these things are. And what I heard kind of going through Jeff's comments, I think there's a lot of misunderstanding maybe between what's actually in here and what maybe you thought things were. But one of the things I would encourage you to do, because this is going to the council for approval, is I definitely want to have workable roofs for mechanical equipment. And I don't think it's, you mentioned requiring penthouses. I don't think that's really realistic given mechanical equipment today. I am a little concerned about the, the ten percent of the roof. I think that just sounds a little small, and I didn't catch that before. So what I would encourage you to do, Jeff, is if you can come up with some models and just show what this stuff takes up. At the same time, I'm really concerned about really bad, we've got some really bad roof lines. And really beautiful buildings that, but the roof line really kind of detracts from the whole thing. I look at some of the buildings like Navartis, their research building. It's got a beautiful roof line where they focused all their exhaust stacks into one concentration, did some really great stuff. That's the kind of stuff that I'm looking to encourage. And instead of just the random equipment all over the place with stacks all over, kind of looking like a refinery. So that's certainly my intent. But definitely, if you can provide... provide examples, um, and prepare, and prepare staff so, so it's not at the last minute, that would be really helpful. So just to go through some of the comments, adding language to the definition, um, for R and D, I think that's a good recommendation. I think, like, the, um, exhaust stacks of only eight feet, I think that's really covered in, um, allowed projections. It talks about those types of things, so I think that is already allowed.
The only thing is the limitation is, I guess if it's there more than five feet, is that what it says?
Well, it says, "Height limits are for various heights, for the various heights districts do not apply to spires, belfries, cupolas, domes, or other architectural projections not used for human habitation, nor chimneys, ventilators, skylights, parapet walls." So I would, I would say that chimneys, ventilators would apply to exhaust stacks.
Um, right.
So I, I would, I would consider that an allowed projection. I think that's...
Oh.
It's, uh, page four-dash-six, C1.
Okay, so this, yeah. Right. This could be a bit confusing, and actually, I guess I was getting a little confused. The, the five feet is not the absolute height limit of those things.
Right.
They can actually go up to twenty-five feet.
Right.
It's just that if they are higher than five feet, then they are limited to the ten percent of the roof area. So, you can have your eight-foot stacks or whatever they are at, um, even higher than that, as long as collectively they don't cover more than ten percent of the roof area, and then the rest of the roof can be covered by things that are less than five feet. So it's, I'm, I'm sorry, I was, I was getting confused. And, uh, I was, I think what I previously was saying was that they're limited to five feet and ten percent of the roof area. If, if that wasn't what you heard, that's what was in my head, and that is not right. So, just to clarify, it's, five feet is basically unlimited coverage. More than five feet, up to twenty-five feet, is limited to ten percent. So you can have your eight-foot stacks.
So I don't think this is as restrictive as you may have thought.
Right, right.
It'd be great if it said stacks in there, because I don't think those are chimneys, but...
Well, it says, "Do not apply to spires, belfries, cupolas, domes, or other architectural projections not used for ham, habitation," nor...
Usually not architectural.
Nor to chimneys, ventilators, skylights, parapet walls, cornices, solar energy systems, mechanical equipment, or other appurtenances usually located on the roof. I mean, we recognized that we couldn't think of everything, so we tried to put in some general language that kind of covered the other stuff.
That seems to cover it pretty well.
I think that covers just about everything.
Yeah.
So I take my, I take back my recommendation about the eight-foot stacks, because I think it's already in there.
It's covered.
It's already covered. Thank you, John, for that out.
Okay, the renewable energy credits, I agree. I think that's a, a, a good idea. I would like to see also some sort of limits on that to the percentage that could be off-site, and also tying it to the life of the building. I think that's a, that is a, a key thing. Also, considering, uh, uh, for daycare, the in-lu of payments, um, for the Child Development Center, I think that's a good idea. And also agree that, uh, allowing the lights to be on in the parking garages during the day is, makes sense. Um, but other than that, um, oh, responding to Vanessa's comment about the two-point-five bedrooms, I can't really, I, I think that I'm, I'm okay with the two-point-five bedrooms, and just seeing kind of how the sizes of families are shrinking, and just kind of observing the, the families that live in PPP, um, I find that workable. We're, I think we're still moving in the right direction, and we've got some really good bonus stuff, but I, to me, that's a workable number. And that's the extent of my comments.
So how do we make a motion?
Yeah, or do we, do we need to sort some things out still?
Can I, uh, suggest things that I've heard that I think you all agree on as a starting point?
Go ahead. Scorekeeper.
Yeah, sort of.
Okay, definition of R and D. You all seem to agree that that's okay. Don't need to say anything about the exhaust stacks, Owen. We don't need to say anything about the offices in the neighborhood retail overlay, because we covered that, even though I didn't remember that we had covered that. Concerning the in-lu fee, I heard basically that you all feel as uncomfortable as I do about that, applying it to square footage simply because of not knowing how to write that formula. Okay. Renewable energy credits, I heard that you are okay with that, but that it should be, uh, no more than fifty percent of the, and total energy, or total bonus-able energy, I guess. Is that what it was going to be? No more than fifty percent of the energy that you're claiming credit for? Is that right?
Yeah, some, yeah, I think we, we had a fair number, but...
I'm not really sure about that. Yeah, it's very arbitrary, and I haven't researched this enough to...
Well...
So I think, I think we have, uh, fairly unanimous, uh, you know, unease about that.
About the fifty percent?
Yeah.
Well, about the concept in general as being counted for the entire...
For the entire...
Oh, yeah. No, absolutely. I, I heard that loud and clear.
And, in my opinion, as fifty percent being...
Well, I heard a couple of you say that. I think that seems like, I mean...
For fifty points.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's as good a number as any. We, we can't study all these things to death.
So that would be fifty percent for twenty-five points? Or I'm not sure. How would that work?
I think, I would say that no more than fifty percent of the alternative energy for which bonus points are being applied for can be from off-site sources. And the off-site source has to be available for the life of the project.
Yeah, and, and the point I was making was with a long-term contract, is, yeah, I would absolutely support it for the life of the building, but I, I think making it be in a long-term contract makes it easier for the staff to enforce and monitor, so that was, that was my point there.
Long-term contract for the life of the project. How about that? Throw them both in.
So, uh, one quick, uh, so for, for that alt, for the zero, for the zero net energy, okay, never mind. Actually, I answered my own question in my head. Keep going.
Uh, I think I heard unanimous support for, uh, in-lu fee for, uh, TDM for the Child Development Center.
Mm-hmm. Yes.
And for lights at night in garage, I mean, in the daytime in garages.
As needed.
Yes, right, not, obviously, obviously not on the top level of an open parking structure.
That was previously, that was prohibited somewhere, or?
Well, the way the code section is written, it says that lights have to be on a timer or a photo sensor thing that turns them off in the daytime, and, and they're also not allowed to be on at night if the parking facility is not occupied and they're not required for security purposes. So the idea is they can be on at night even if the structure's not occupied if it's for security, but nobody really thought about, I don't think, well, what about in the daytime? You might need lights for security, so... It, it pretty clearly says you can't have lights in the daytime at all.
Okay.
But I don't think we thought about the basement parking garage.
Okay.
And so, let's see, from, from Wareham's comments, that's what I've heard, those four things, R and D definition, renewable energy, um, off-site with the caveats that you said, in-lu fee to ECDC, and lights on in the garage in the daytime. And then each of you had some other, uh, well, some of you had some other comments.
And I think one thing we kind of skipped was the, uh, the shared parking for commercial uses and whether we were okay with that. That's kind of a, I, I think that's kind of a bigger one.
Uh-huh.
And I, I think I would support that. I, I, I supported it for residential uses.
Yeah, I would support it also.
Yes, that's right. I would also.
So I'm hearing everybody's okay with that one?
Yes.
Or, I can guarantee you there will be one council member who will not support that, but we'll see how that goes.
I assume that does not include the provision of leasing it to other uses?
It does.
As residential, it does?
That's the, that's the point.
Okay.
But revocable on thirty days' notice?
Yes. Right. Commissioner Moss suggested prohibiting commercial vehicles altogether for home occupations. Uh, there is a provision in home occupations, and we actually kind of debated this, uh, among staff. It says, "A home occupation shall not have more than one associated vehicle that shall not exceed twenty feet in length," and that twenty feet's pretty big. So, I mean, that was intended to be like a moving van or something.
So they could have a pickup truck, but...
Yeah, or a panel truck or something. "The associated vehicle shall not have more than square feet, more than four square feet of signage related to the home occupation." Yeah, so I, you know, if somebody wanted to have a little panel van that they use to help people move elsewhere, from one, from, you know, here to over here, and they just park it at their house, I don't think I would consider that commercial hauling.
Okay.
Commercial hauling is where you take a bunch of stuff to the dump for somebody or something, you know?
Okay.
And bring it to your house before you take it to the dump. I mean, that's an interpretation kind of thing.
Okay. Well, my intent was to allow businesses, that, you know, small-scale moving businesses that, uh, are not, you know, not, not going to have, not going to be moving to and from the home occupation site.
Right.
And thus won't impact that area.
Right. I think that would still be okay. We could call that something else.
Any kind of moving business has a truck that's bigger than a...
Pickup truck.
Than a pickup truck or a...
Well, twenty, twenty feet is, is pretty long vehicle. I mean, it's not a semi-truck, but I don't know how big some of those U-Haul trucks are, but, um, I bet they're twenty feet.
Bigger than twenty feet.
But I, I see that as a, as a, as a business type a lot, where somebody just has a pickup truck, and they put, post on Craigslist that they're available, you know?
We don't, I don't think we want really big trucks associated with home occupations. That's why we limited it to twenty feet.
Has it been a problem? Is that why this came up at all?
No, I think we're just anticipating that it could, could become, right? I don't, I mean, Arley does all the home occupations, so...
I haven't heard any complaints for kind of small trucks that are empty. All of the complaints are that they're full of stuff, and sometimes it's spilling out of yards and spilling out of vehicles.
Right, that's the problem.
So if the person is not bringing whatever they're moving home with them, I don't think we'd ever have an issue.
Right. So I'm assuming you don't want to prohibit commercial vehicles then? I mean, there was, it, this, rather, I should say that you're okay with this as it's written?
Yeah.
Okay. What do you want to do about the findings for parkings in the front setback?
I'm of a, I'm of an opinion that we don't want people parking up in the front yard. You know, that's, that's from the beginning, something that we've been talking about. And I, the idea of tandem parking is, we weren't able to use that in this example because we had these limitations, but I'm...
Right. It's, yeah, it's not, I meant, I, I, I'm not trying, my, the point of my comment is not, I, I, absolutely, I don't want to encourage parking in the, in the front of a property, but, um, I think where you're going to have it already, where you're going to have a tandem space, I don't think we, we get, you know, a lot of benefit from pushing that space just back behind the front setback.
Well, let me...
So I don't know how to address that.
Let, let me just clarify, though. This provision that you're reading, it does not refer to the front setback. It refers to the area between the front of the building and the, and the front lot line, which usually is the same as the front setback, but even if, even if this house is set further back than where the front setback line is, you, you're not supposed to park in the area that's behind the setback that's also in front of the building.
I see.
The idea is to keep the parking not in the front of the building, unless that's the only feasible place to put it.
So this differs then from the existing requirement, kind of about not, the existing requirement is more about not parking in the front setback, I think.
I believe that's right, yeah.
Okay.
This is the whole front of the building.
All right. I, I think that addresses my concern then.
And, you know, obviously, if there's no other place, like, for example, you have a building that has a three-foot setback on either side, how are you going to get a car behind it, you know? You have to park in front, so it's not feasible to park anywhere else, so that, so you can make that finding.
Okay.
Well, we don't have any enforcement to stop people from parking in the front setback.
Well...
So they're going to, you know, I mean...
Yeah, this is referring to your actual designated parking space. If you're going to park on your lawn or something, well, you're technically not supposed to do that. If we catch you, we'll probably tell you, you shouldn't do that, but this is talking about the site plan that you're reviewing at the planning commission, and they're saying this is where the parking is, you know, and you say, no, you can't put it there, right?
I agree with that.
Yeah.
We're there, let's see.
There was the bay window. Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
The bay window, which, so...
That, you know...
The question in my, in my mind is if there's the, the property line, the bay window goes over, I'm, I'm sorry, the, the building.
The setback line.
Setback line?
There's a setback line, there's where the building is, which is often at the setback line. Um, so it's the side of the, say it's a residence, it's the side of the residence, which has a, remind me, five-foot setback, correct?
Three, three feet.
Three-foot setback. Um, the bay window projects out two feet, uh, and then, so you have one foot on the side setback, basically, and that's what you're talking about is not so great.
Shouldn't have been...
There's, there has, there have been these, these instances, I've, I've worked in many houses like this, where you can't eat, you, you can't even walk by the two houses, because they both have windows that are in the...
Let me clarify. The bay window projection is only allowed in the front setback on a street-side setback where there is no house next door to you, or in a rear setback. It is not allowed in an interior-side setback.
Oh, I...
To, so that you won't have two, how, two, you know, bay windows like two feet apart.
I know we went over that during this.
So it's on facing the street, on either the front or the side, or facing your fifteen-foot rear setback area. So I guess staff felt like, what difference does it make if you have a little bit of building square footage within that area?
Well, does it, uh, I mean, is there any other, other than it being, having to be cantilevered, is there any other limitation on, on that?
Uh, yeah, the aggregate, aggregate width of bay windows on any one story does not exceed fifty percent of the length of the wall containing them. No individual bay window exceeds fifteen feet in width, and all such windows are cantilevered only.
Okay.
Okay, so they're above the ground floor.
All right.
Right. So they have, well, no, they can be on the ground floor if the ground floor is above the ground, you know, I mean, the first floor.
So there's, so they could be one foot off the ground?
Yes.
Well, I suppose they could, but typically you have like a five or foot or so basement. I mean, well, yeah.
Is there any, is there any provision about the, the depth of the window?
Well, that's what the projection is.
Okay.
They can, they can project three feet, but not to within five feet of the front lot line. So if your, uh, I don't know, if your front setback is, um, let's see.
Six feet.
Six feet, right, because, you know, the front setback in Emeryville is defined as the setbacks of the average of the two on either side of you. So if it's six feet, you could project three feet, but that would get you to three feet from the front lot line, so you can't project that far. You can only project one foot, because we don't want you to be more than, less than five feet from the front lot line.
Now, does this apply to big apartment developments also?
Um, well, I guess it would. I mean, it, it's for, uh, the, um, hmm. Says three feet but not to within five feet of the front lot line for a single unit or two-unit dwelling.
Oh, so it's only for small buildings?
That's what that limitation is, uh, I suppose, but I mean, the setbacks typically only apply in the medium-density residential zone. I mean, they apply in the other residential zones too, the RMH and the, and the RH, but there's not a lot of property that's in those... those zoning districts. So mainly, we're talking about the Triangle and the Doyle Street neighborhoods, and you're not going to get too many really big apartments in those areas just because of the lower densities that are allowed. Plus, everything in those neighborhoods is infill.
Well...
On little lots.
I'm, I'm not like super jazzed about it, but I, I'm not going to fall on my sword over this one either, so.
How did the issue come up in the first place?
Commissioner Moss raised it at the...
I mean, even having...
Oh, this is a typical thing that you find in zoning regulations for encroachments into setbacks. I mean, bay windows is a pretty common feature of buildings, so.
I mean, I've seen them in San Francisco where they hang over the public sidewalk.
That's the different thing, right. Then they're in the public right-of-way, and that raises a whole host of other issues. Drives city attorneys crazy.
I'm okay with this, the way it's written.
I'm fine with it.
Yeah.
Okay. Let's see.
How about, how about that change that was made from three families to 2.5?
Can I say something about that? So I, I agree with you in principle. Like, I, I think the, the intent of what you're saying is, is spot-on, but I'm, I'm just concerned as we look at it, since this is part of the incentives program, I think, you know, we're trying to accomplish two things with the incentives program, right? We're trying to, we're trying to give an incentive that encourages something, but we're also trying to encourage people to, to want to get that incentive. And so I, I think, you know, we run the risk, I think if we, if we make any one incentive too difficult to get, nobody's going to try to get it, and we're not going to get any of that, of that incentive.
I agree with that.
So that, that's, that's my concern as I think about it.
Good rationale.
We've, we've had people insist on having three-bedroom apartments, and then they get rented to students, because there aren't families that want to rent them.
One, one thing I would note about, that's kind of an eye-opener for me, that was pointed out by our Economic Development and Housing staff, is that it's not just about the number of bedrooms. It's also, perhaps more importantly, it's about the interior layout of the unit.
That's true.
And you, if you look at a typical two- or three-bedroom unit in some of these big apartment buildings, if you just look at the way they're laid out, it suddenly becomes kind of clear that these are designed for adults, for groups of adults, because you have one suite over here with a bedroom and a bathroom, and then over here you have another suite with a bedroom and a bathroom, and in between you have the living room and dining room and kitchen. And that's not the way a family would function. The family wants all the bedrooms in one area with a hallway and a bathroom, so that the kids can be playing over here while mom and dad are entertaining somebody out in the living room. And it's just, I, I never even thought of that, but when I look at these floor plans, it's obvious that these big three-bedroom units aren't designed for families. So that's one of the major enhancements, I think, that we're going to bring forward in the design guidelines. We're going to have examples, floor plans, and say, this is family-friendly, this three-bedroom layout is not family-friendly. So personally, I think it's more about that kind of thing than about necessarily how many bedrooms you have.
The other thing that I think is, is really important in terms of family-friendly housing is also kind of family-friendly amenities within the, the project. So, you know, opportunities for, for kids to, you know, areas that are designed to provide opportunities for kids to run around, or throw a ball, or things like that. So I don't know, I mean, do we feel like the, the incentives for, address that appropriately already?
Well, let me just...
Wasn't there a, I'm, I'm sorry, wasn't there a, we were presented a family-friendly housing design guide, if I'm not mistaken? Maybe as within the, with the universal, what is that, the universal design bonus points, maybe we could include a list of these, these family-friendly things that are possibilities to be included. I know it's late in the game, but I'm just, you know, that, because of the...
I think we have that covered.
Oh, good.
If you look at the chart under family-friendly, it's...
What page are you on?
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm not, I'm in the wrong place. It's on page four dash 15. It's item nine of the chart. It says, "Design must comply with provisions of the Emeryville Design Guidelines applicable to family-friendly housing and be approved as part of design review for the project." Diana just forwarded to me today the draft edits that I guess our Economic Development and Housing Department has come up with to the guidelines, and all of those kind of things you just talked about are in there. And of course, those guideline revisions would be coming to you for a recommendation before they go to the council for adoption. Anyway, so this, just this reference to the design guidelines, I think covers those things, as long as we make sure that those things get in the design guidelines. And I mean, they already are. There already are some of those things in the design guidelines, there, because there are already family-friendly guidelines in here, but the proposed revisions will just beef them up a lot more, with the kinds of things you're talking about.
Well, you convinced me.
Okay.
So at this point, we have, I guess we could make a motion with the straw poll agreed upon amendments. Shall I list them, or would you like to list them, and then we can?
I can list them if you want.
I think it'd be better since you wrote them down, right?
Okay.
Yeah.
So I have five.
Okay.
I have modifying the, the definition of research and development, adding that for alternative energy, or onsite alternative energy, well, that up to 50 percent of that could be produced off-site, and, but it has to be for the life of the project on a long-term contract. For TDM, an in lieu fee for the Child Development Center. Parking garages, lights may be on at night for security reasons.
But not at night, anytime.
I'm sorry, daytime for security reasons. Anytime, right. And shared parking, or not shared, but leasing out parking for commercial uses similar to what we have for residential uses. Those are the five changes that I've heard that you all agree on.
So I'll put that motion forward.
And I second that.
And so this, I mean, you can just take your final action tonight, just based on the, with these changes, and we'll forward it to the City Council for their hearing on January 15th with these recommended modifications, assuming you all vote to approve it, which you need to do now, I guess. Are you ready?
Let's take the roll.
All right. Commissioner Moss?
Aye.
Commissioner Sherman?
Aye.
Vice Chair Cardoza?
Aye.
And Chair Kummerly?
Aye.
For ayes, the resolution is approved, and we will forward this to the, to the City Council with your recommendation.
What a major milestone.
Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you.
Did Carol leave? Oh, too bad.
She did. She's watching at home.
I want, I want to commend the staff, all of you, and...
Absolutely.
And the, the entire, the, the committee as well. I think you all did wonderful, hard work this year, and many years past, and really happy to see this moving forward to completion, and happy holidays to all. Any other?
Thank you.
Okay, meeting adjourned.
And we're going to meet?
Commissioner comments? No, okay, I guess not.